I think we got our lighting fixed in here. When we walked in, it was dark and I was thinking, "Am I off or is the room off?" It's just the lighting, we got it fixed. Councilmember Ray will be joining us shortly. At this time, we are excited to call our December 6, 2018 Town Council meeting to order. We will start with the Scouts. Scouts, come on up. Scouts, plural. Excellent. Come on down. Councilmember Taylor will assist.
Mayor, thank you very much. We're excited to have our Scouts here with us tonight. For those that are new, we invite them at the very beginning of each council meeting, recognize them. We'd like to ask them to give us their name and the rank that they're currently at right now.
My name is Michael Graham and I am a First Class Scout.
My name is Tara Cox and I'm a Life Scout.
My name is David Cox and I think I'm a Second Class.
Excellent. And they're all going to make great eagles someday, Mayor, so we're excited to have them here. I've asked Michael here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if the audience will please arise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we thank each of you for being here. And if you'll stay up here for just a minute, we do have a little gift for you. But while I run and get those, Mayor, do you have anything for our Scouts tonight?
I just want to compliment you. I see Scouts all over the town of Gilbert. In fact, at one point, I was told that we had more Scouts in the town of Gilbert, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts than any other community in Arizona, and I was very proud of that. So thank you for the work that you're doing and all the service you're providing to our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And please accept a copy of the Constitution that we give to each Scout. Big hands for our Scouts tonight.
Our invocation this evening will be offered by Pastor Eric Jones from Evident Life Church right here in downtown Gilbert. Pastor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I want to wish you Merry Christmas. I love this season, this time of year, and I love that we get to celebrate what Christ did 2,000 years ago, but He's still doing today. And so let's bow our heads. Just want to speak some of the words of Jesus and some of the work that He did in this world over this community. Well, Lord, we thank you that you did come, that you stepped out of heaven, you stepped on this earth. Thank you that you brought hope to the hopeless and that you're still doing it today. And I just speak, hope that comes from you over every household in this special community. That this season would not be one void of hope, but filled with hope. I thank you, Jesus, that you're the Prince of Peace, and we need peace in our world today. And I thank you that we have peace in and through you. And so we just say, move in our community and in our lives with peace. I thank you, Jesus, that you are the one who brings joy, joy to the world. The Lord has come. And I just declare joy over this community, this Christmas season, that joy would be in our hearts and it would be the real deal. I thank you, Jesus, that when you came, that you brought love, real love. You so loved this world that you came. And that's what we're celebrating this season. And I just ask that love would abound in Gilbert. Lord, that you would work on every one of our hearts this season to look for those who need a touch of love, and that we would reach out with sincerity and with real help and real love. Jesus, we thank you that you came. You're the reason for this season, and so we pray all of these things in your powerful, precious, supreme name. And we say amen. And thank you all for everything that you do. And I want to let you know, I pray for you often, and you're a real blessing to this community.
Thank you, Pastor Jones. Likewise, we appreciate what you're doing in the town of Gilbert. The clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Coram is present.
Thank you. And I'd like to move up one item from the end of the agenda to right now, and that is just a couple of announcements, one of which I'm really excited about, and that is that we are one of five cities in the world that have light-the-world vending machines in the Heritage District, right at Wilder Tower Plaza. It's a really exciting thing for us because these cities are known for being big cities, and yet Gilbert has an opportunity to give. We are blessed that we have this opportunity. There are four local charities to benefit from these light-the-world vending machines. There's one in London, in the Philippines, in New York City, in Salt Lake City, and in Gilbert, Arizona, which is pretty exciting. So part of our Gilbert Kindness campaign, we are asking all of our residents to please, especially our youth, to find a way to serve and to give to someone else. It can be through these vending machines, but there are so many ways to give back in our community. And so while I have all of you here, I just wanted to invite you to join with us and light the world by giving and sharing Gilbert kindness. So just wanted to do that real quick before we went on to the rest of our agenda. At this time, we will present a proclamation declaring the month of January 2019 as Speak Up, Stand Up, and Save a Life. Thank you, our Mayak students. Come on down. I heard you guys were all a little nervous. I was going to make you speak, so I'd like you guys to all give a five-minute presentation on what your life after high school will be like. I'm just kidding. And Chief Solberg, and we're so glad you're here as well. Come on over, and I want you to actually be the first one to tell us a little bit about this wonderful event that you have co-founded as part of Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for having us here. We are excited because three years ago, we started a conference for our youth called Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life. We were tired of hearing about the high rates of suicide and mental illness and drug overdoses and school shootings, and we decided that we wanted to try to make a difference. And if you all know, we told, we tell people, see something, say something. But we also have told kids from a young age to mind your own business and not to be a tattletale, and snitches get stitches. And we thought, can we change that mindset? Can we let people know that if their friend is in trouble, it is their business? And if you speak up and tell a trusted adult, you may just save a life. So we are trying to change that, and we have, our conference will have 4,000 people, 4,000 students plus adults and law enforcement. And we're trying to, it's going to be a train-the-trainer. It already has over 140 schools pre-registered throughout Maricopa County. And then these students get to go back to their communities and they get to roll out the program. And hopefully, we're going to be able to, by notifying, noticing kids in crisis and getting them the help they need, that we're going to prevent future tragedies. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. I do have a proclamation I'd love to read. But while I have these five, we call them Mayak students, but that's the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. These are some of the stellar youth that we have in Gilbert, and I'm super proud of them. They represent their schools, they represent their youth population. This is the future of Gilbert. We're in good hands. I've gotten to know many of them. So I'm going to have each of you introduce yourself and tell us what school you're from. No five-minute speech required.
Hi, my name is Will Johnson. I go to Williamsburg High School.
Hi, my name is Kenny Jones, and I also go to Williamsburg High School.
I'm Aiden Matthews, and I go to Highland High School.
I'm Lucas Steakback, and I go to Higley High School.
I'm Aubrey Ewing, and I also go to Higley High School.
I graduated from high school. I'll just say real quick, I went to the opening ceremony last year, it was the first time I had been. And it's a great conference, the students, the counselors, law enforcement, we're always doing what we can to help the kids. But it's really the kids, their involvement is what's going to make that change. They know the kids better than we do, they know their friends. So getting them involved is key to reducing the bullying, the stress, and the suicide. So it's a great conference.
I have the privilege of reading this. I'll just read a couple paragraphs out of it. It says, "Whereas the Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life movement presents an ideal opportunity to help bridge the gap between young people, our local community, government, and law enforcement in a positive way. Whereas more than 3,000 Arizona students from 120 public charter, private, and tribal schools have learned the message and created student-led impact projects in their schools and communities. So I, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2019 as Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Month." Thank you to each of you, and thank you for your work in organizing this important event.
It's quite a privilege for me tonight. We often recognize our servicemen and women who give such a great service to our country in various capacities, but normally, we're just talking about those who are actually in the military. But tonight, I want to recognize a couple of people who have given some great service to their country because their dad's been gone for a year, and they were recognized for that. And I'd like them to come up if they would right now, Wes and Elliot. This is especially a privilege for me because these two happen to be my grandsons. And we want to recognize them for the service that they have given to their country, being without their dad for a year. He happens to be working for the State Department and has to do a remote tour and giving service to the country. And the State Department has recognized that service that these two boys have given, not having a dad for a year. And I'd like to read to you, they also have a medal that they were presented with by the State Department, and I'll get that to them here in just a second. But I want to read to you what was sent to them personally from the State Department. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Wesley Carson Walker. This is Wes. His brother Elliot's here, and Elliot has the same certificate. It says, "In appreciation for the sacrifice asked of you while separated from your father during his unaccompanied tour of duty, this certificate and accompanying Medal of Recognition are offered as a symbol of the Department of State's gratitude. Just as we are proud of the men and women serving at unaccompanied posts, we are also proud of their families. Thank you for sharing your father." This is signed by Mike Pompeo, the Secretary of State. So we want to recognize these two for the great service they've given to their country tonight.
That is a proud grandpa, and we're proud of you as well, Councilmember Anderson. Yes, and cute grandma down there as well. Thank you to both of you. At this time, we have communications from citizens. Members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. I'm going to ask, we have four requests to speak, and given that we have a tremendous amount of business ahead of us still, that we do two minutes for each of the public comment, and I look to Vice Mayor to assist. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Paul Rodriguez to come to the podium and just give us your name and town or city of residence. And then next will be Lucy Linder.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilpeople. Very quickly, I can remember when I was the age of some of these Scouts and I had to wear braces. And after I wore the braces, and this goes on for years, but after you wear the braces, you have to, I remember I had to wear a retainer. I don't know how many of you have experience with retainers, but I was told I had to do that or I'd have to put the braces back on. So I wore the brace, excuse me, I wore the retainer. Okay, I'm going to tie this to the trap, neuter, and return program that most of you know something about. That's the program where you take homeless cats, get them spayed and neutered, return them to where they were trapped, and then try and keep them in place so that other cats won't move in. It's very important that those cats be fed. You have to feed them. If you don't feed them, they're going to start roaming again, and that'll destroy the trap, neuter, and return program. In all candor, I didn't name the program, Trap, Neuter, and Return. I think maybe, to be more correct, it maybe should be Trap, Neuter, Return, and Feed. Because a lot of us say, yeah, we're okay with the trapping and the returning, but when it comes to the feeding, that seems to be the sticking point for a lot of people. So my only point is that it's no different than if you're making a BLT sandwich, you know? If you only have the bacon and the lettuce, you've only got a BL sandwich. So the Trap, Neuter, and Return is a little bit of a misnomer. It should be Trap, Neuter, Return, and Feed. Thank you for your time.
Lucy Linder. And then next we'll have Joe Guzik.
Mayor and council, my name is Lucy Linder, and I'm a resident of Mesa, Arizona. I know that there has been the ordinance against feeding cats on town property, and that ordinance does need some revision. Because there's nothing in the ordinance that says anything about trapping. And the one way to control the cat population is to trap, neuter, return. There are people that have given various points of information as to why the ordinance was passed and things about people with feeders that are leaving cans and things all over. And while this format to come before you and the open mic is very much appreciated, we need to go a step further. We need to sit down and dialogue about this because we're not going to get anywhere unless we are able to exchange information, ask questions, answer questions, and so forth. And so rather than have a lot of information floating around that may or may not be correct, I am imploring the council to take advantage of the people that are experts on Trap, Neuter, Return. Stephanie Nichols Young of the Animal Defense League of Arizona would be glad to attend a meeting or speak to you because she has statistics of everything that's been going on in the valley for many years, and not just in Gilbert. And the fact that there are other communities that are nearby, Chandler, Tempe, Mesa, they have grant money, they have ways of handling the Trap, Neuter, Return that are very effective. And Gilbert so far has not adopted that. So I think it would be very wise for the Gilbert City Council to take a look at what is being done, to take a look at what works, and again, to sit down and dialogue about it so that we can get something done beyond just coming to the meetings and saying, "We'd like to have you listen to something about Trap, Neuter, Return." So thank you for your time.
Joe Guzik, and up next will be Mike Burkhart.
I guess I have to be brief tonight. Mayor Daniels, Town Council, Joe Guzik, as I always tell you, I'm the lovable, slightly annoying person, I'm the education lorex. I'm going to ask you to ask me a question. If I, if you were to ask me, what is 1 plus 1 plus 1 plus 1 plus 1? And I spoke back to you and said it was 2, would you tell me that was okay? Probably not. You'd say it's 5, and you would defend that truth. If it was 3 or 4, you'd still sell me, it's 5. I want to share with you a little bit about our public safety training facility. I've read the, I've read the complete report on it, and I appreciate what the police chief and the fire chief have done to share with you all the needs that we have. But at the end of the day, not just in Gilbert, but all across this country, conversations have to start with the total cost of a project. The total, every cost, the land acquisition, the interest, all of those things need to be included and shared with the community. So if we talk about it in an open, honest way, it's about $120 to $130 million to build the facility. If we do that in the simplest terms, over 20 years, for every citizen at 86,000 of them, that comes down to $75 a person. I'll gladly pay that anytime. I can't tell you everything that I want to tonight. Obviously, I need a little bit more time. But what I'm asking you to do is share with the community the total cost of the ownership. Because when we have that conversation, we'll always have the right conversation in context and make sure that we protect our budget for our police officers and firefighters. And that's where I'll end. Thank you.
Mike Burkhart, please state your name and city or town of residence, please.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels and Town Council. My name is Mike Burkhart. I am a Gilbert resident, and I'm a captain with your Gilbert Fire and Rescue Department. I'm also the proud representative of over 200 members of the Gilbert Chapter, the professional firefighters of Arizona. I come to you before this evening to say thank you. First, say to thank you to the citizens of Gilbert, who turned out in great numbers and supported the bond initiative in this last election. We had 99,306 of the 146,141 registered voters, or roughly 68% of the registered voters in the town of Gilbert took part in this bond election. Question 1 passed with 65% of citizens voting in favor of. And for that, your firefighters and police officers are extremely and incredibly grateful. I also want to say thank you to the members of the Town Council that supported this training center project. Your visionary leadership that ensures well-trained firefighters and police officers for generations to come. Vice Mayor Peterson, Councilman Cook, certainly Mayor Daniels, thank you all for helping us many a times on the rainy Saturday mornings at the farmer's market, and certainly to walk neighborhoods and spread the message on this important project. To the councilmembers not in support of this project, we are also grateful. We were grateful for your civilian in discussion and public discourse on a project that you disagreed with, but we were incredibly grateful for your civil discourse on it. We're also super grateful from the senior town management, CIP team, budget team, every team, I think, in the town of Gilbert had some touch on this project. To our command staffs from the Police Department and the Fire Department for their consistent leadership and vision to see the success of a project of this magnitude. There were so many town departments that aided in some part of this successful project. Again, I can't begin to list them all. So on behalf of the over 200 members of the professional firefighters of Arizona in the Gilbert Chapter, and I feel confident in speaking for the over 400 members of the GPLA, we want to gratefully and humbly say thank you for all of your support. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor, for communications from citizens. Thank you. At this time, we will move to our consent agenda. Vice Mayor? Yes, Mayor, we have three items that have been requested to be pulled. That would be items 12, 13, and 15. And I would move to approve the consent agenda with items 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 14. I think 8 and 9 are getting continued for our... I don't have a note on here that they're continued. Are they on this list? Yeah, it's on our meeting notes for tonight. 8 and 9, continued to the 20th.
Mayor, excuse me, the numbering on that is wrong. Number 8 is actually number 21. It's an annexation under the public hearing. And what's number 9 is actually number 22.
Okay. So 8 and 9 are fine on consent as they are. And then on through, I'll just start, I'll just, sorry. That's okay. I didn't see those. 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 14, 15A, 16, 17, 18. Then item number 31, Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, I move that we appoint Steve Benz and reappoint Roy Schmidt to the Public Facilities Municipal Property Corporation with terms beginning January 2, 2019, and ending January 1, 2022.
And I would like to add item number 32, which is, consider appointment of one regular member. That person would be Brian Albee to the Fire and Police Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Local Pension Board with a term beginning December 6, 2018, and ending November 30, 2022. And that's all I have for consent, Mayor. So that's a motion to approve all those. We have a motion by Vice Mayor and a second by Councilmember Cook. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That leads us to Agenda Item 12.
Mayor, I won't be long on this because we have a pretty big meeting ahead. So just briefly on this, everyone knows I'm opposed to this project to begin with. Anything we do that's pouring more money into what I will call somewhat of a money pit bothers me. I know the reasoning and justification behind it, and it's somewhat reasonable, but I just, I can't support change order after change order on a project that I think is already unwise. So that was my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve Agenda Item 12.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 13.
Mayor, if I may, again, I'll be short as well. This started off with a specific scope, police-fire, immunity one. It's kind of grown a little bit faster. I was asking staff for a little bit more detailed project justification. I haven't seen that yet, so I'm not ready to support it here. Not that we may not need this. So if it gets continued, that's great. If it's approved, if it's moved tonight, I'll be opposing it tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Agenda Item 13.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. That also takes us to Agenda Item 15.
Mayor, I've also referred to this as a money pit. This one, I'm very concerned with taking control of the park. You know, I had hopes about the potential of that. Those didn't pan out based on the data that I saw. And we're going to see, again, change order after change order. And I've just stated, and I'll repeat, that I'm not going to support anything for the operation of what's kind of BLD 2.0 in my mind, or anything that's not basic functionality and safety. And this, in my mind, exceeds that. Furthermore, I'll just voice some concern about the fact that there was no formal bidding process that went out on this. I know there are a lot of signed companies, I know one in particular, who'd be happy to bid this, and there are actually better prices potentially out there. In fact, I know of one that's had been formally quoted, okay, back of the napkin, but still, we should bid it out and see. So those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just a word of caution, I agree with Councilmember Peterson that the history at this site is not good. And I'm willing to support this tonight, but I'm doing that with the word of caution that if this continues, I will not be supporting any other further cost overruns out at something we've already had a bad history with. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, not to repeat some of the concerns, but that's, you know, all these change orders is how we got into this problem in the first place. As I benchmark the cost on this, we're really not getting a good buy. So, I mean, I've personally bought some of these panels at a cheaper discount at a significantly lower volume. And typically, in the private sector, you get volume discounts. It doesn't go the other way. It doesn't get more expensive when you buy more, and that's what we're seeing here in this contract. So it's not good to approve this tonight. Hopefully, we can get a better process with better pricing, then we can move from there. So that's where I'm at tonight, Mayor. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Mayor, thank you. I just want to add some, maybe some narrative here. I've actually spent a lot of time going through this agenda item. The original agenda that we received was actually not that good, and it actually wasn't correct. It really is about a single project related to the signage as relates to all eight ball fields. related to the signage as relates to all eight ball fields. So what we're seeing here is really a contract for the graphics for the eight ball fields. And the organization that basically would get this contract has provided an alternative type of product that actually is better than the lowest bid if we did it twice. So it is actually cheaper than the lowest bid related to vinyl. I've actually talked to another sign company that could possibly have been an option, that could have possibly produced a product like this. Their bid was, we'll call it, somewhat in the ballpark. But there is a process issue that we do need to have worked on. I know I've talked to staff about it. They're going to make that a better process for us. So I'm okay moving forward with this particular project, as is.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. It is our standard practice to bid out these types of projects. Can I ask either Robert or John? Which one of you wants to... Which one wants to come to the podium? Robert, you can tell John to come, I guess, if you want, because you're his boss. But if you'd like to come forward, you're welcome as well. Can you tell us why we didn't go through our standard procurement process on this agenda item? I realize there's been some confusion because of the way the agenda was presented, so...
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to guide you through the process. Staff will typically do a formal RFP bid for a project such as this. We didn't actually know we'd be doing the operations of Cactus Yards until late June and into August. And with current construction going on at the property, we didn't have access to the grandstands until all the construction had been completed, providing safe access for the vendors to be able to get on-site, for us to have the measurements for all of the different signage. It's well beyond a typical signage package because it's nothing that the designs are already created for. We're creating those designs from scratch and recreating the fields and the grandstands. So as it is our normal practice, timing-wise, the fact that it takes several months to do that process and then another few months to construct them and produce them, we knew we would be past opening day. So the goal was to do a Mesa cooperative bid that was a formal process and bid out. And our knowledge was that that type of aluminum paneling was covered under that contract. When we reviewed it deeper, the specific 3-millimeter die-bond product suggested it was not in that contract. But in all the pricing that we researched, along with just knowing what that product costs for 50,000 square feet of signage, we felt the numbers were still appropriate, including the design cost and installation cost for a facility of that size. So with all future projects and our current projects, we typically go through that process. This just had a special timeline due to the construction and when we chose to take over management of the facility.
Thank you. So just to clarify, this isn't just your typical scoreboard that might be found at any ball field, some of our high schools and other locations. This is actually recreating the grandstands and bringing them back up to what we would call the Gilbert Standard.
Yeah. Mayor and Council, it's creating those grandstands and the likeness of these stadiums, which no current company has the exact graphics for. And we wanted to make sure it was unique to the Cactus Yards facility. So those graphics have to be done again to fit those grandstands and install them in a way that is not going to inhibit the use of the grandstands. And then also, these products can be cleaned in a better way than the vinyl. And with triple the lifespan, without the tearing and the wind damage, we feel this product is going to get us a lot further for cost efficiency and also really create a pop for the facility and a good value.
Thank you. This time, we'll entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Oh, yes, Councilmember Taylor.
So, Robert, how do we know we're actually getting a good unit cost on this? What have you done to benchmark with other companies? Because it seems like we're paying above-market here for the unit costs. What have you done to know that we're getting the best cost for this?
So, Mayor and Council, and Councilmember Taylor, we were able to at least research the prices on our own for this type of material prior to researching it. And the cost is more than just the panels themselves. The cost is also the design of all of these. It's quite a bit of design work and the installation work. So, you know, having to rent the equipment to bring in the equipment, install it properly, it's a lot of square footage and a lot of area. So the cost per panel, we felt, was within the range of what we saw with other companies. And I think it was also adding in those design costs and installation costs. Some companies do it differently. They'll charge you design packages for each panel or an overall design package. And we felt the design signage package was really good for the artwork and the graphics because it's a lot of work to create for a facility like this. So we felt comfortable with the panel numbers based on what we saw from other companies.
But we didn't get any other formal bids on it?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, we weren't able to do the formal bid process just due to the timing of the project and wanting to be opened for the grand opening. And it was more of a timing than the desire to do that.
My understanding was that although there wasn't a formal bid process, it was offered to each one of the four or five sign companies, and none of the other ones, in their mind, could beat this price. And so they all declined to even make an offer. Is that correct?
Mayor and Councilmember, that is correct. And all the companies don't have the warehouses and the ability to print these signs. So it is a limited market.
Hey, I think questions have been satisfied. Thank you, Robert. We'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Agenda Item 15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. I believe that completes our consent agenda and moves us to a public hearing. We're going to try to be efficient here on this public hearing items. Are there any requests by council to discuss any public hearing items? 26. Okay. We have requests to speak on Agenda Items 25, 26, 27, and 28.
Mayor, on 26, all I need to do is just make a modification on wording, so you can include it if you want. I just need to make an amended motion on changing the word.
I'm going to do it separately. It's a little bit easier.
No problem.
28. Okay. All right. So I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 19, 20, 21, 22, 23. I will close the public hearing on those Agenda Items and entertain a motion, 19 through 23.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. All right. We're going to sort some slips up here that we have, requests to speak. Are there any requests on Agenda Item 24? Okay. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 24, then close the public hearing on Agenda Item 24 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Item 24 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Thank you.
Mayor Daniels? Items 21 and 22 are supposed to be continued to December 20. Approved. Can we get a motion to continue those two items?
Do I need to reopen our public hearing? I will...
I would just, just to be careful, yeah.
Open the public hearing on Agenda Items 21 and 22, and close the public hearing on Agenda Items 21 and 22, and entertain a motion for continuance.
I move to continue Items 21 and 22 to December 20. Second.
Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Sorry, that was really confusing with different numbers on our meeting notes tonight. So I apologize. I'm going to open the public hearing on Agenda Item 27, seeing as that we have no comment cards. I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 27 and look to Councilmember Peterson for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Pull it up as it's written, so I can read this properly. I apologize. It'll take me just a second. "I move to adopt the attached ordinance for Z1817, amending the land development code." The rest is presented there.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. I think the last one that we have no public comment on is 29. So I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 29 and close the public hearing on Agenda Item 29 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Item 29.
Second. Please vote. That motion also carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. All right. Now, we are on to the ones where people are here to speak. So we will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 26.
Thank you, Mayor. We're just making a small correction on a word. And I've checked with Legal that this is correct. Move to adopt the attached resolution approving GP18-13, and move to make the attached findings of fact and adopt the attached ordinance approving Z18-27 with one modification to Condition 4 of the ordinance to add the recording number 2018-0894584 and replace the word "project" with "property."
Second.
Did I close it? I closed the public hearing. Now we'll vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. All right. Agenda Item 25. By understanding, we have quite a few individuals that wish to speak on this agenda item.
So we have approximately eight or nine that would like to speak on this item. And I will call you up a couple at a time, so if you can have one person up at the podium and one person on deck.
Absolutely. And we will do this in order of our code. First, the staff will come forward and present a report. After staff, the applicant comes to the podium and presents the project. And at that time, then we have the public testimony.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Ashley McDonald with the Planning Department. This item is GP1809. It's a major general plan amendment at the northeast corner of Warner and Recker Roads. The subject property is outlined in red on this map. As you can see, it has a variety of land use classifications on it, all employment-related, with a hard corner of community commercial. Surrounding the development is Morrison Ranch to the north and west with some employment designations to the east as well. It is one half-mile north of the Santana Freeway and a half-mile to the west of Power Road. This, as I mentioned, is a major general plan amendment. These are projects that are over 40 acres in land use change from a non-residential category to residential, or vice versa. And so this goes through kind of a separate and more elaborate process than our typical general plan amendments or rezoning applications. What the applicant is seeking on this project is a change on 124.8 total acres. They are looking to reduce the amount of business park by 28 acres, reduce the light industrial by 87 acres, and the community commercial by 8.9. All that will be replaced with neighborhood commercial on 8.2 acres, residential 8 to 14 on 15.3, residential 5 to 8 on 15.9 acres. And then the bulk of the land use designation will be residential 3.5 to 5, and that's a total of 85 acres. The existing land use map is laid out, as shown on this map. Business park on the periphery of it, with the center being light industrial. Staff does think it's important to note that when this quarter section came in for master planning, it included the Live Northgate development that exists there, that multifamily, and included some development considerations as part of the ordinance that really made sure that there was transitional land uses from the residential development. There are 60-foot landscape buffers provided to help buffer. And then it's important to note, too, that Recker and Warner Road are planned as 140-foot wide arterial. So the adjacency to residential on this was really well thought out when this plan came in. In terms of the applicant's proposal, they are requesting, as I mentioned, a variety of residential land use designations. The bulk of that, again, is that residential 3.5 to 5, which is the eastern portion of the site. More towards the center, you can see the denser residential development with the hard corner being the neighborhood commercial. Important to note on this project is the current land use designation is employment. When an employment land use sits adjacent to another employment land use, the land development code has a zero-foot setback. So if this land use were to transition to residential, we would see an impact to the adjacent property in addition to the loss of employment uses here. So we went ahead and calculated that out, what that impact would be. And it's approximately two acres of land lost to the property to the east in terms of their development potential. So it's not just this site that we would be losing employment on. That adjacent property would be impacted as well with increased setback requirements. The subject site is located within the Power Road growth area. This is part of the existing general plan that was adopted and approved by our voters. This growth area is focused on industrial and business park employment, supported by commercial and shopping centers. So it falls within this growth area today. In terms of the market analysis, the applicant conducted a market analysis. Our economic development team conducted a market analysis as well. And that has been provided to you as part of the staff report. I won't go through all of these items that has been identified, but I did want to touch on just a couple of them. The first one being the employment-to-population ratio. The town of Gilbert falls below Maricopa County as a whole in terms of the employment-to-population ratio, providing just one job for every three employees. The National Citizen Survey that was conducted showed that 60% of Gilbert residents are satisfied with employment opportunities within Gilbert. And so this just shows a need for diversity within our employment market. In terms of resiliency and wage, again, there is a need to improve our industry mix. We know that retail and restaurant uses are our top employment sectors within the town. And those don't bring in the high-wage jobs that we see with light industrial and business park uses. So as we think towards our future and making sure that we have a diverse tax base and diversity of jobs, it's really critical to maintain our light industrial and business park users. And then in terms of development growth and clustering, Mesa's adjacent 85212 zip code, which is just east of Power Road near this property, is one of our most active for construction growth. There's 1.4 million square feet under construction. And the town of Gilbert can't remain competitive against Mesa if we don't have the land use designations that would attract those same type of users. Here, we've overlaid the Mesa aerial with our general plan just so we can look at a regional context in terms of what's happening. We know at our northwest corner, we've got some employment uses. There's light industrial and general industrial. It's largely built out. There's some infill property that remains. Then along the Loop 202 freeway, we've got Mercy Gilbert and the Medical Campus and things that are occurring along there in terms of employment use. Rivillon and Park Lucero, further towards Gilbert Road, is building out. And then we've got Phoenix Mesa Gateway. They're inner Loop 202. And then development, of course, along the US 60. Most recently, we've been having some development activity with the Wedditt Ventures property as they continue through their land entitlement process, just kitty-corner to the subject site. So all of this is really to say that development is converging on this site from the east in Mesa. We're really starting to see development in this area. I think at one point there, we were hearing a lot that it's too far to the east, employers don't want to locate there, but we're really, I think, as Eastmark comes onboard, as Phoenix-Mesa Gateway continues to grow and expand, as the Mesa's inner loop starts to develop, we're seeing the center point of where employers are looking to locate is shifting east, and so I don't think it'll be too long before we see development on our own Power Road corridor. We also conducted an analysis of the land use classification distribution within the town. This includes both vacant and non-vacant parcels, as we might expect the largest percentage of the town is single-family residential, followed by public uses and then commercial. But you can see here on this graph, the red is our industrial uses at 4%. And as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, really having a diverse distribution of our land uses is important. And so further reducing something that is just about the lowest segment of our land use designation, I think it's really a critical question to ask, is this appropriate? As part of our review process, the applicant has also submitted a rezoning application and provided a conceptual development plan, and I think it's really important to understand that the applicant and their job is not to show us that they've got this great development plan with the major general plan amendment. Their job is really to demonstrate that what exists on our general plan today that's been adopted and ratified by our voters isn't working, and we won't argue that this is a unique development plan, well thought out. The question before us tonight is really this land use at this location. As part of the major general plan amendment process, we reached out during our 60-day agency review to seek input from town stakeholders, and that includes the Chamber of Commerce, who provided feedback that they opposed this downzoning request. We also received feedback from Phoenix-Mesa Gateway, that the site is subject to frequent aircraft overflights, and they support the current general plan designation. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this project, however, staff would just add, I guess, as a final point, that there's always going to be an appetite in the town of Gilbert by residential developers to build homes here. But the vision of creating this community in which to live, work, and play, does this land use change do that, and does this land use change really lend itself to creating a resilient Gilbert? Planning staff and economic development don't believe that it do, so based on that, we are recommending denial. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, or come back up and address any questions after you hear from the applicant and the community.
Thank you, Ashley. Councilmember Peterson?
What evidence do we have that this much light industrial in one spot is ever going to develop?
Well, you know, I think that the market will drive that, and I think the question is, as we're starting to see development head this direction, do we want to give it up at this time? You know, the applicant has talked about the fact that they've sat on this property for a number of years, but we haven't seen anything along that Power Road develop, and so I think the question is just a matter of timing on it. The economic development shares with us that 27% of their pipeline is manufacturing-type uses, so I think that there is potential for this to come in. It's just a matter of timing.
Councilmember Anderson?
Ashley, would you go back to the land use distribution pie chart you had? Thank you. I know we're kicking around these jobs-to-population ratio numbers a lot, and there's a big difference between what the applicant gave in their market study and what our market study shows, but those aren't that important to me. What's important is the distribution of land uses. Is there a rule of thumb that an ideal community would follow in the distribution of land uses?
That's a great question, and I'm not sure if...
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, if Gilbert was an island unto itself, I would say that we would be able to come up with specific ratios that would be the most beneficial for the town in terms of land use, looking at revenue and how we were going to fund general fund issues. But since we're part of a region, and people may live in Gilbert and shop in Queen Creek or live in Queen Creek and shop in Gilbert, there is no magic number or bullet that we've been able to find or identify for land use types of ranges. We just have never come across a number that is ideal for those spreads.
I did, in years past. I'll share those with you later.
Perfect.
All right, any more questions for Ashley? All right, thank you, Ashley. We'll, this time, invite the applicant to the podium.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. For the record, my name is Ralph Pugh, and my office address is 1744 South Val Vista in Mesa. It's a pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of Lennar Homes. With us tonight is Mr. Alan Jones, who is the president of Lennar Homes Arizona, along with Jeff Gunderson and Todd Scorro, who are involved in senior management. Also proud to be with the largest home builder in the country, who is headquartered here in Arizona in Gilbert and employs many, many people in this vicinity, not only in the town, but in the area. So Mayor and Councilmembers, I thought maybe to begin with, I'd like to thank Ashley McDonald for the wonderful work that she's done on this case. We have disagreed for seven or eight months about how this case should ultimately be resolved, but Ashley and all the staff members have been respectful and professional in all the work that they've done, so I want to express that here this evening, and so everyone recognizes that. I think it would also be helpful to avoid some of the confusion and question that might exist in some of your minds about the people who are here tonight and why they're here. Why are there people in this audience that have white t-shirts on with Lennar? Why are there people that live in Gilbert and surround the project are here tonight? The simple truth of the matter is this, Councilmembers: As we began this case, there was no citizen concern, and our neighborhood meeting went very smoothly. The neighbors that attended, when we started this case back in May, I think it was, were very happy with what we were doing, and there was no reason for us to assume that there would be any opposition, which is typical in some zoning cases, right? We've all seen that. But this was an unusual thing. Here you have a major general plan amendment, and no one was concerned about it. So as we get close to the council meeting and realize that despite the Planning and Zoning Board Commission's recommendation of unanimous approval for our request, there still hasn't been any involvement by the community. So we did reach out, and Lennar did reach out through Bill Steen Consulting and individuals in Morrison Ranch and in Copper Ranch, south of Recker that's there, and they reached out and talked to people and found that they do indeed support this case and wanted their voices to be heard. So it's not that we manufactured people here tonight. I'll hand into the clerk, this is what you all received electronically today. This is 304 Gilbert residents, 100% Gilbert residents, who support this case and live adjacent to the project. Ashley's explained the site plan really well and what we're doing, and we believe it's an awesome plan that will be very creative, and people will enjoy it once we move forward with it. But here's the key: There are 304 individuals who live around this project, who are residents of Gilbert, who had never been involved, didn't even know about it, and we figured, hey, maybe the council should be aware of how the people that live next to it feel. For that reason, we reached out and contacted them. Of course we would. How do you think this happens in opposition to zoning cases? People walk the streets, they talk to their neighbors, so that's what happened here. And you look at this exhibit, if you would, this shows you the vicinity to the property. You can look south of Warner, and you can see almost 100% of property owners in Copper Ranch support this project. You can then go north of Liv North and see a huge majority of individuals who live in Morrison Ranch. These individual markers indicate families and individuals who live there who support this case. Here's a bigger view of it, a more expanded view of that support. So that's the answer to how this all happened, and it simply dawned on us that there was really little to no citizen input, and it was very quiet on that front through all P&amp;Z meetings, and until we got to council, we finally decided we better at least let council members know where their citizens are and how they feel about this case that live around the project. That's how that all happened. And so you have white t-shirts here tonight that represent Lennar employees and Lennar trades and suppliers. That group is here because, of course, Alan Jones wanted them and their support here, because this is an important case to them, and Alan will explain that to you in just a minute. So let's just proceed quickly, Mayor and Council, with a few thoughts that we have about this. We spent a lot of time with Planning and Zoning Commission in two hearings, and we will not take nearly that time here tonight. So here is the general plan in 2009. Half of this acreage was residential, and half of it was business park, and Mr. Jones is going to explain to you that they bought Trend Homes, who was in the process of platting homes on this before the downturn came. Here's the plan today that you're all aware of. Here's an interesting thought, Councilmembers: This is the corridor of the freeway and the railroad. And I think what you see here is that predominantly the development that's occurred in Gilbert of an industrial nature occurs within a half a mile of that freeway, as it kind of snakes through the town, and generally within a half a mile of the railroad tracks. And I think what we're dealing with here tonight, frankly, Councilmembers, is an issue of expectation versus reality, and what our position is is very clear. Just because a piece of property is shown as industrial or business park and colored a certain color on your general plan map does not mean that it will translate to development. There are many, many other factors, and what we want to show tonight is the reality of where this site is. Here's another leading indicator: There is no freeway visibility to this site, none. You can't see it if you wanted to. Secondly, it has no Power Road frontage. Now, it was nice for the staff to mention that we're a half a mile from Power. Well, that's true for the eastern boundary. The western boundary is a full mile from Power on Ray, on Recker, excuse me, which is indeed a residential street. So there's a lot of talk about the Power Road corridor and the vitality of Power Road area. We are not on Power Road. We are on Recker, which is 100% residential, with a few churches, a few schools, and some minor incidental commercial uses. Here's the real interesting part about this whole case, Councilmembers, that really befuddles us, especially as we heard tonight, the 75-foot setback buffer and how much acreage will be lost to the employment development to our east if it ever occurs because of that buffer. Please take a minute and look at this exhibit. This is indeed the general plan designation for the Power Road corridor growth area. What you see in kind of blue-green there is the corridor. Where the star is, that's our property we're talking about tonight, 125 acres, it is indeed in the map, in the general plan, in the Power Road growth area. It is not described verbally there. The language of the general plan says a half-mile west of Power. So there's an inconsistency there. Don't want to make a big deal out of that, but just look at the exhibit. It sticks out like a sore thumb. This is not the right spot for industrial development. Then, see the red column there, kind of orange? Every one of those properties, 100% of those properties are residential. So why in the world would we look at this piece where the star is, the one we're talking about tonight, and say, man, that's the best property we have in town for employment development? It is the worst. It has none of the indicators that demonstrate and manifest economic development for industrial uses, and every one of those properties that's in the Power Road corridor adjoins residential, and the 75-foot buffer will apply. So when anybody in the corridor brings a developer to you and has an employment use, and they are west of Power, and they want to develop, they're going to have to preserve the 75-foot buffer. So why criticize us tonight about that? If this goes residential, we will be like every other property on the west side of the Power Road corridor. Here's my favorite: This is an exhibit of what you have here is Recker going north and south that ends at Baseline and ends at Pecos, and you have Warner, which we all know dead-ends, about a quarter-mile east of Power Road at the canal. Do we really seriously expect employment users to come in and think, man, that site on Ray, excuse me, on Recker and Warner is just a wonderful, beautiful site? They want connectivity, and they want transportation availability through there. Three quick questions, Councilmembers, that's probably on all of your minds, and we'll cover them briefly. Many of you are probably asking this question: Why should I vote yes to amend the general plan from employment to residential when there's an expectation in the town that we don't do that? We fully understand, but here are some quick reasons for that. It was residential 10 years ago. It is completely surrounded by residential uses. It is not located in a place where there's good visibility or access. Those are easy answers to provide to those who ask you that question, and, another important one, the residential communities that surround the property support this change. Then you might ask yourself, well, why don't we just wait? Let's just vote no on this case tonight, and then let's just wait. Let a few years go by, and let's see what happens then. What good will that do, Councilmembers? Well, do you think anything will change? It won't. The freeway access won't change, the lack of visibility won't change. The only thing that will change, frankly, is Morrison Ranch will be built out, and immediately on the west side of Recker Road will be houses. Then it will be completely surrounded with built houses. So nothing will change in that regard, and industrial developers look for those things. They look for compatible uses, not uses they're going to have conflicts with, like two charter schools and residential. They look for financing and tax issues. They look for visibility, and all those things that combine for a good project. I would finally ask you to consider this: You have regulatory authority as a town council to regulate land use, but that authority should be used with careful restraint. Your job is to balance the needs of the community, the property owner, and the person that wants to use the property. It's not a simple matter of simply saying, well, we as a town believe that our inventory of employment land needs to stay where it is. Towns do not have inventory. Towns have private property owners who own land, and your responsibility is to judiciously and carefully, with a degree of restraint, regulate that land. So Mayor and Council, we respectfully urge your support of this case tonight. I would say one thing about the Planning Commission: Every one of the Planning Commission members who sat through two public hearings on this voiced their opinion that we do not like to downzone property, we want to avoid that, we want to support our general plan and economic development. Every one of them said that on the record. Then virtually every one of them said, in essence, this is not the property to stand on that principle. This property was never well-suited for employment development. Mayor and Council, we urge your support of this major general plan amendment. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I'm sure there's others that want to speak here tonight. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ralph, and I'm actually really happy for you tonight, because usually when a room is this full...
This is an unusual thing.
...they're usually not in favor of whatever you've brought before us. So I actually feel like this might be like a pinnacle change in your career, and I'm really excited for you.
You know, we've got to go gentle on this. It might be one to end on. I'm afraid there's a lot of people who would like that idea.
Please don't end. You have a long history.
So can I just, Mayor, one question that still is on this exhibit? The other question you might be asking yourselves, and going to say, well, what about the financial impact on the town? What about the long... What about the long stream revenue to the town?" This exhibit shows exactly what the Economic Development Department produced. The first part of this exhibit, right here, assumes that economic development, industrial uses start right away on this property, and home building starts right away, and they're successful. And guess what the delta is? $468,000 benefit to the town if it stays industrial. If it all started tomorrow, like helicopters dropped in users, then we know that's not happening. So the chart below it is really the telling thing. This chart assumes residential development begins immediately, and employment development might begin in a decade. Maybe, probably not at all. When you look at it that way and you apply the same analysis and you assign the same model assumptions, there's $1,800,000 benefit to the town. So with that, I'm officially done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ralph. Any questions for Ralph? Councilmember Anderson.
One question, Ralph. How did we make the leap from light industrial to residential when there's a lot in between?
Excuse me, council member. I didn't hear the last part of that.
How did we make the leap from light industrial to residential with, there are a lot of other land uses in between that could be planned on this property?
Well, the answer, as I understand the question, Mayor Daniels and Councilmember Anderson, is how do we go from light industrial to residential instead of something in between in the land use hierarchy? The answer to that is, in our opinion, business park is the single most difficult land use to develop in the town when you are under these circumstances. Business park works really well where Rivillon is and other visible uses, but we think that's even a more difficult user to find than a light industrial user. And there's certainly not enough commercial demand in the area to do the whole thing commercial. So that brought us to the residential use, which, in our opinion, straightens up all these exhibits and makes them make sense where they line up correctly.
What about general office, office development?
Good question, Councilmember Anderson. The answer to that is, this is 125 acres, and the thought of that much office space without the characteristics of freeway visibility and some economic incentives and all kinds of things that go into those decisions, that too would be very, very unproductive, and no one's interested in that at all.
Well, I'm not talking about the entire parcel, but...
Oh, you mean some of it.
It could be incorporated into the planning of the parcel.
Yeah. So that's, Councilmember Anderson, you keep asking really good questions. Incorporating those other land uses into the property has some degree of merit. There's no question. But that also leads to the possibility that if those uses don't materialize over a reasonable period of time, then what are we left with and what do we do? And frankly, the only thing we think's compatible with residential would be some offices and the small commercial we have, and there's just no interest in offices at this spot. It would be, that land would lay vacant and be difficult to plan and deal with in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Now we'll go to public comment and look to Vice Mayor to assist.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question for the public first. Todd Scorro, you indicated that you'd like to donate your time, but we don't do that at town council. So would you like to speak or no?
No.
Okay, thank you. So I'll start with, we're going to do two minutes, please, from the staff table. Thank you. Eldar Maximov. Sorry, I'm having trouble reading your writing. Come on down to the podium. Give us your name and city or town of residence, please.
She says that nicely. We're both lefties.
Yes.
And so we understand what it's like when people can't read our writing.
We do, and I appreciate that. Sorry.
Mayor and Council, my name is Eldar Maximov, and I respond to many variations of that. I'm a resident of Morrison Ranch, and as has been spoken before, we were not even aware that this is going on. I am a professor at Arizona State University. I teach accounting, and I would like to provide my unique perspective of what is happening in this area. But first of all, you know, given the Christmas season coming up, this whole situation of holding out for light industrial, somebody, you know, sometime will come and take up this land, reminds me of Cousin Ed in National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation, holding out for management position, and as a result, he never got it. But here, I think, we have Lennar, and they didn't pay me for this. You know, I'm just a resident. We have them willing to invest 120-something million, I understand, in a neighborhood and essentially to invest in our schools. And let me tell you, from my perspective, talking to big accounting firms who have clients all over the place and specifically in tech, and there, we had this conversation where they asked them, "Why don't you come and have, you know, headquarters, offices here in Gilbert Chandler, you know, the valley?" And their response is, "Well, your schools are so-so." And so they prefer to have their offices in Massachusetts where the schools are great. And let me tell you, research does show that light industrial is not very favorable of good schools in the area. And so I strongly ask you to support the neighborhood, the residents. Every single neighbor that I have spoken with was extremely for this change in zoning and support the planning commission that you have chosen. Thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, Eldar. I want to apologize. Sometimes it's the pencil, too, that creates a harder reading for me, I think. And I am left-handed, so I have a terrible handwriting. If I could have Paul Siskowski, please, give us your name and city or town of residence, please.
Sure. Paul Siskowski. I'm from Tippi, Arizona. Good evening, Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Peterson, council members. On behalf of Rockefeller Group, you probably know Mark Singerman, who's usually at a lot of these functions. He's in New York City tonight, so I'm with Colliers. We represent the marketing, and so I'd like to go through a brief timeline, if I could. We sold this property in 2008, approximately 150 acres, to Rockefeller, rezoned it for mixed-use, majority industrial, business park. Couple of years went by, and 95, 96% of the inquiries were from residential developers. So in 2012, Rockefeller did a joint venture with Live Communities, built the first phase, apartment phase there on Recker was very successful, built Phase Two very successful. In '13, LDS bought 5.38 acres contiguous to the south in center construction. Again, from '13 to '16, we almost got a charter school at the southwest corner of Elliott and Recker, but that didn't come to fruition. Not a lot of industrial, and it was mentioned industrial might happen the next year or two. We don't see it. We don't see it. It's been 10 long years. We had a heart-to-heart, and we said highest and best use we confirmed was residential. We've got residential to the north, to the west, to the south with a couple of charter schools, and we think highest and best use is residential. We hate to say that. We'd love to lease a million square feet of industrial there. We don't see it happening now or in the near future. I know they're going to try to do some industrial closer to Power, but just for those reasons, the access on Recker doesn't have a full diamond. There were some deals done at Mesa that's further east and south because of freeway visibility, accessibility, and airport accessibility. And there are also some opportunity zones that people are buying now, so it's going to be a tough hole, we think.
Thank you. Can I have Mike Williams, and then next up would be Pete Johnson? Name and town or city of residence, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike Williams. I am a very proud 13-year resident of Morrison Ranch. I wasn't approached by any marketing group, and just until a couple of days ago, I wasn't aware of any of this development. But I can say wholeheartedly that I'd much rather have a responsible builder like Lennar come in, and they have some amazing communities in Gilbert and around Gilbert that have produced hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of jobs. And I think there are some confusing statements made earlier about taking jobs away from the community by building residential when, in reality, I'm a construction professional myself. I drive to the other side of the 101 out on the west side for work, and this brings builders, trades, suppliers into the town of Gilbert in the short term for probably, I would estimate, two or three years, but also adds maintenance jobs. It adds funding for city jobs and police and fire and all of those other items that seem to have slipped through the cracks in some of the earlier speeches. So as a resident and a very proud resident of the area, I just want to say that many of us support the project for Lennar to come in and the rezoning. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I have Pete Johnson, and then next will be Cindy Willardson. Name and city or town of residence, please.
Mayor, Council, thank you for giving me the chance to speak here. My name's Pete Johnson. I'm a resident of Gilbert. I've lived here for about eight years. I have kind of an odd confluence of interests here. I'm an employee of a Lennar subsidiary. I'm an underwriting manager for their mortgage division, but I'm also a resident of the Copper Ranch community, located directly across from the parcel in question to the south. I only found out about this this morning, and I wanted to come down here and hopefully give the chance to, you know, say my piece about it. I've lived in the community for the past eight years, and I was unaware that the parcel across Warner from us was zoned as light industrial. When I moved in, it was a real lovely cornfield. To this day, it's a nice cornfield. I drive by it every morning. And I have some real concerns about the type of businesses that might be able to move in and their impact on both the livability and the property values within my little community. Like everybody said already, it's, the parcel in question is surrounded on three sides by residential buildings, homes and apartments, and it's a quiet, nice, thriving residential community. Some of the development, potential developments, I just brushed up on my zoning this morning. You'll have to pardon me. But some of the, what appears to be the potential businesses that could be located in there are not really conducive to the area. There's the potential for an impound lot, medical marijuana grow facility, even a crematorium has been mentioned a couple of times. And I don't really feel that that's conducive to the area. Some of the concerns in opposition to changing the zoning of this parcel are economic, and that's understandable, but it's been a cornfield for the past eight-plus years, and we're not really getting that much economic, you know, boost from 124 acres of corn. If we allowed it to be residential, which I assumed it already was or could be, it would fit in with the developments that are already on three sides of it, and I feel like it would add to the community and to the tax base for our schools in the community. And so it's, I feel like I just wanted to speak in support of changing the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have Cindy Willardson, and then next will be Darren Hughes? Again, can I have your name and city or town of residence, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Cindy Willardson, and I live in the Morrison Ranch community, 3759 East Morrison Ranch Parkway. I had to write down my notes because I'm not very typical of doing this type of thing, but I'm here tonight to urge you to support this major general plan amendment. And I know that a lot of you are wondering why all of a sudden we're getting involved. You know, these neighbors are coming out and getting involved, and again, like other neighbors and people in the area have said that it's, we were not aware of this. We had all just assumed it was residential. There's a church going in that live apartments, and we had no idea that this was zoned for light industrial. And I actually posted some information on my, on our Morrison Ranch neighborhood Facebook page on Monday of this week, when I learned about this situation, this zoning, and the response from my neighbors was overwhelmingly in support of the change to residential. And I just want you to not take lightly the fact that in five days that they were able to get 300, over 300 signatures in support of changing this. I think, you know, we're kind of beating a dead horse here because a lot of us are saying the same thing that, you know, that we're concerned about the types of things that could go in. We're, you know, we don't feel like there's great freeway access, so what's going to happen with the roads and the traffic and all that? But I just want you to know that my support is for changing the plan as well, along with all these other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Hughes, and then next David Scholl, please. Name and city or town of residence.
Hello, Mayor Daniels, council members. My name is Darren Hughes, and I am a resident of Gilbert. I've lived in Gilbert for the past six years. I also work in Gilbert, and I'm fortunate to be able to work for Lennar Homes. And previously, I worked for Trend Homes. We've developed many communities around this area, including Kitty Corner, Cooley Station, just south, The Gardens. We also had a small custom home development called Cascade that we built. And most recently, we're building on Recker and Williams Field at Solana Town Center. And in fact, this actual piece was tied up in 2007 by Trend Homes. We are developing the plat, and if not for the downturn, it is very likely that we would have homes on this site already. I live at Greenfield and Pecos. There are a lot of fields with corn or alfalfa out there that are designated for the types of uses that we see here. Near the freeway, we're putting in the Lindsay off-ramps, and that makes all the sense. There's demand in those areas for this type of development. But this parcel is better suited for residential, and so I would urge your support in changing the general plan amendment to residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have David Scholl, please, and then last but not least, Alan Jones?
Good evening. I'm David Scholl. Live in Phoenix. For the last probably six months, the applicant and the owner of the property have asked my company Vintage Partners to help them strategize for the retail parcel. I've been a retail developer for about 35 years and have several partners along the way. As we approached, really looked at the eight acres on the corner, I wanted you guys to be aware of what the market was telling us. We looked at both the opportunity there, the feasibility, sat down with tenants, tenant reps, brokers in the retail business. Most of them really confirmed what we thought, which was that the Recker corridor is a much weaker corridor than the Power or Higley corridor just because of freeway access and what was pointed out early that they dead-end a few miles to the north and fairly quickly to the south as well. So some of the same weaknesses for the industrial destination, I think, are there for retail as well. When we sat down and showed a few alternatives of how this could be presented to the community or the marketplace, they seemed much more excited about having this retail be able to reach out to a neighborhood. Felt like that it could be a much better contribution to the city of Gilbert, and most of that was confirmed, I think, by what we've seen on the opposite corners, where really no retail has shown up at this corner to date. We really feel that if there is 125 acres of homes there, our vision for this eight acres was really to reach out to those homes, provide some dining destinations and some services that really try and support a neighborhood. If it really ends up being 125 acres of industrial, most of the brokerage community and the users indicated to us that it probably ends up being some kind of fast-food pads and some kind of service that supports the employment that's inside the industrial. We felt like, after listening to all of that, that the, what was being proposed as homes and 125 acres of residential would be much more sustainable for any kind of retail in the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alan Jones, please.
Mayor, council members. Alan Jones, Division President of Lennar. Our address is 890 West Elliott in Gilbert. And those here in white shirts have identified themselves as Gilbert residents, and the rest really are here because of the pride in Lennar. And I could do a lot to help Ralph with his getting support. He just needs to represent Lennar more. We have tremendous support for our communities, so glad to be here. Wouldn't be here, wouldn't be standing in front of you if this property wasn't previously residential. Wouldn't have taken the time or the effort to try and rezone a property that was general planned for business park and light industrial, but this, a majority of this property was residential. Trend owned it. residential. Trend owned it. Trend lost it during the downturn. A large developer, the second point is, a large developer, one of the largest in the country came in, bought this property, paid $33 million for the property that we are in escrow to purchase, spent 10 years, hired colliers, that was already stated. They talked to 60 different users. No offers. We met with Mark Singerman and, and his company. And the reason why we're here today is because of the fact that it was residential. It got rezoned by a major developer. The developer tried unsuccessfully to find interest in this property. No one was interested. We wouldn't have taken our time to spend the last year in trying to rezone a property if we didn't believe that the right use for this property was residential. We all know that the success of residential depends on location, location, location. And so does commercial, business park and light industrial. The right designation for this property, the right use for this property based upon the uses around it is residential. Just one last comment. I love the map that the, the staff showed, okay? They call it the map of the power road growth area. When you look at that map, it looks like this. There's a thumb that sticks out. There is one piece of property that is sticking out from your power road area that you should preserve. In fact, if you don't, that would be a mistake on the town council's part. The only property that makes any sense to become residential is a property that's before you today. This property right here should be over here. It has incompatible uses, as we found out from the residents. The residents don't want this to be light industrial and business park. Those uses are not compatible. And it's for those reasons that we're before you today because we absolutely believe and are prepared to spend $120 million today to build the residents in this area, a nice community that is compatible with what they already have. So, our request tonight is that you vote in support of what a majority of this property already was and should have been developed, and that's residential.
All I have, Mayor. Thank you. At this point, is there any questions from Council for staff before we deliberate? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Anderson.
Just to clarify with Chris, there was mention made tonight about the conflict between language in the general plan and the map itself. And I asked you that question and gave me some research. Would you explain what takes precedence in this case?
According to our general plan, the, the map does control over the general language that's in the general plan. So, the map is more controlling than what the general language is, especially in this case. It identifies a general area, but if you look at the map, it does identify the parcels in particular.
Right. At this point, it's time for Council to deliberate on this item. So, who would like to go first? Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I'm gonna, first of all, I asked the question to staff what evidence we had that this property would ever develop that much light industrial. And I did that with, it was a little bit of a loaded question because all I heard was some ideas and theories and thoughts, but there is no, in my mind, any real evidence of that. And in my opinion, that much light industrial in one place, especially where it is, I don't think is ever going to develop. There's going to have to be some rezoning on this property at some point or another. It's going to have to happen. We're going to have to face those facts. That's coming. Now, you can make arguments for all kinds of other things. I do want to highlight something that I heard from Councilmember Anderson. I really appreciate that he pointed out what a leap it is to go from light industrial to residential. Indeed, it is a leap. The, light industrial is one of the most intense uses we have. And to go from that, and I, you know, there's little attempts to buffer, but that is very much enveloped by residential in that area. And so, as far as appropriateness of uses, residential is definitely a much more appropriate use. And so, I do, I do support it. I want to make one last comment and then I'll be quiet, I promise. I'm gonna have a, this is going to be the shortest economics lesson ever. But that comment has been brought up. It's about economics. First of all, you've heard the term downzone, okay? I have two problems with the way that word is used. First of all, it's not being used according to the proper definition. And second of all, it somewhat shows some ignorance as how economics really work. And I'm going to highlight this very briefly. Downzone, by the definition, is to reduce or limit development or the number of buildings permitted on a property. That's what downzoning actually means. In other words, you're reducing the allowed density of a property. That's the actual definition of downzone. I hope people are listening because they're using it incorrectly all day long. Downzoning is not when you take a property from commercial, some commercial use, and turn it to residential. That is not what downzoning is. Look it up. Secondly, it also assumes that taking property from commercial and taking it to residential is always bad. That somehow, commercial uses are always superior to residential ones. That's like saying, in economics, you know, we deal with finite resources and we have to decide how we're going to use them. I'm going to use an example of milk. I can take milk and I can make ice cream with it. That is a superior use. You know what? We should never use milk to make cottage cheese again because I don't like cottage cheese. I like ice cream way better. Guess what? That is really ignorant. The fact is, different scenarios call for different uses. And an economy will tell us how they should be allocated, okay? So, don't talk about residential as it's an inferior use to, to commercial and call it downzoning. Number one, it's insulting. And number two, it's an incorrect use of the word. So, I hope people have taken note of that. The worst thing we can do with any limited resources is waste it. And that's the point I'll say. You take milk and dump it down the drain, that's the worst thing you can do. And when we take a property that is impractically zoned and just let it sit there, that is the worst thing we can do economically. And so, I totally disagree with this idea that we're going to just hold on, wait and see. Well, that sounds nice for you who has no risk and no cost, but actually short-sighted on your part because there's a lot of revenue and a lot of benefit to the whole community by allowing the market to tell us what we need there. And we're hearing that very clearly. So, and it's more appropriate for the neighbors. What a bonus. Lovely. We all win. So, those are my comments. I appreciate the time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. We actually don't clap in council chambers unless we're cheering for students. So, we've worked together for seven years. I had no idea. You were so passionate about ice cream. So, that was something new that I learned today. I know, and dispassionate about cottage cheese. So, we learned something new about our fellow council member. Councilmember Anderson.
I'll go next. Frankly, I'm glad that Councilmember Peterson recognized that idea of taking the leap from light industrial. I was shocked to see the numbers. I, as I mentioned before, the jobs-to-population ratio, those are numbers we can banner about, depending on which economic study we want to look at. But I was shocked to see that our total employment percentage in the town is hovering around 6%. And my rule of thumb has always been about 10%. We're losing it. We're not gaining it. We're losing it. And, and that concerns me greatly. Secondly, this is not an infill parcel. We may have more serious discussion about an infill parcel that hasn't developed for such a long time. This is an infill. There's continuing development to happen around this parcel, which could give rise to development on this parcel in some way that it is either classified now or, as I mentioned before, I don't think there's been enough effort put into looking at other land uses that could, could work on this site, maybe in addition to some residential. I mentioned office. Our office vacancy rate right now in town is about nine and a half percent. And in the county, it looks like it's around 14%. So, office development may be an option that could be part of an overall plan on this site. Last thing I wanted to mention was some language from, I believe this is from the, the applicant's own economic study. There was a statement made in there. It said, "The historic economic profile of Gilbert is a residential community until the beginning of this decade, when a purposeful shift occurred to encourage a more balanced employment versus residential mix." I believe that. And this, that's why I support this remaining as-is or looking at something different. I just don't think enough effort has been put into looking at something in between what we're hearing tonight and what exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. If I could share a couple of thoughts, how I'm observing this. To begin with, we, we've seen something similar to this with the Cooley Station project earlier, where in, in the general plan, and there, there were some aspirations to have some very solid commercial business development in certain areas, but with the success of other commercial areas, Cooley area changed significantly. And I supported and voted for the 2009 general plan. I think many of us did. And as a sidebar, we're reviewing that right now. And I hope everybody is tuning into that because this is when those things matter. That will be, that'll be coming before the voters, you know, in a little over a year. And I, I think the aspirations of a general plan are good. I mean, I think it's good for us to have a vision for our community and outline that. I think that's good to have guidelines and direction for people that want to come into our town. But at the end of the day, the first word in the general plan is general. And we have to be open, open to the ebb and flow of, of the market and economics. And so, you know, it, it is an old document and we should, we should be open to what's happened today with the circumstances in front of us. So, that's number one. Number two, there has been a theory for many years that we have to have a certain percentage of land to have a sustainable town. And there's been some good studies on that. They are dated, maybe about 10 to 12 years old now. And I think, if I remember correctly, they were looking at about an 18% type of ratio that you needed. But the theory is based on the idea that you needed that land base so that you would have enough tax money to run your town like you'd like it to. And we do have a consumption-based tax structure for the most part. We have most of our tax money come from sales tax and retail. So, so that was a good prevailing theory. And you've, you've heard me say in the past that I do believe that we have some mega trends that are changing. With the internet and with large online places like Amazon, I mean, we're bringing shopping malls into our house, right? And the other great trend with the internet is the proliferation of home-based businesses. You, you know, we have some, some incredible mommy bloggers right here in Gilbert, right? And so, what's transformed over the years with the internet is that our homes are becoming quasi-commercial spaces. And the other part of that, that you've heard me, I do believe this is a trend that will come, is that there, there is a disparity in the tax model now with internet tax. And I, I don't like internet tax, but I believe that wave will come. And the town will receive tax money off internet sales transactions in the near future. I don't know when that will come. But if you think about how that disrupts the theory that this general plan was based on, this downzoning, as Councilmember Peterson called, I appreciate that clarification, actually trends in our favor. And I do believe that that's a trend that, that is going to, to happen, not just in Gilbert, but across Arizona in the U.S. And so, we're having, we're going to be able to have more benefit, which I think counters some of the data that we showed there. So, Mayor, I'm in support of this. I would remind that when we talk about, when we hear from the town how precious the power road corridor is, and I, I don't disagree with that, but right this year, we've done some significant things there, like the public safety training facility that have taken land out of that portfolio for commercial uses. So, it's, it's hard to hear it to say one way and the other way, but that is something that we should absolutely keep in mind because I think it has huge runway, you know, given its proximity to the airport. The airport, you know, just to address them and the chambers' opposition here, they, we love the airport. We support them very, very much. We want their success in every way and we contribute to that. And I will continue to support that. But as I pointed out previously, they are very oversensitive and they do push for a little bit more regulation than I think is necessary. I do, I do think, and I hope the Lennar people will, if they're successful tonight, and I hope they are, I'm supporting that, this request, that, that when they sell a house, they'll remind them that there's an airport. And those planes will fly and they will make noise. Because sometimes we hear people say, "Well, no one told me," or "The salesperson, my realtor told me that this wouldn't..." Let's be realistic with what in the world is going on next door. Because sometimes we hear that here as being misrepresented. I know you'll do a great job of that. I know the chamber wants membership. I know, and they have great interests in the town, but I think their interest here is misplaced. And I think they should understand what the larger economic trends are with the proliferation of home-based businesses and the opportunities that we have in front of us. So, Mayor, thank you for the time and I'm, I'm going to be supporting this tonight.
Councilmember Cook?
Well, let me just share a little bit about what type of uses can be put on this particular property based upon the current zoning. So, you could have entertainment and recreation indoor use. There could even be a use of a animal hospital. In fact, if we had another medical hospital and wanted to set up shop there, they could do there on that property. You could have a brewery. There could be wholesale building material sales there. There could be warehousing that's there. There could be a distribution center that's there as well. Also, there could be a call center. There could be Class A, Class C office spaces. There could even be a data center that's on that property. You know, industrial labs for medical research or medical devices could be on this property. There's also lots of opportunity for research and development companies that might be able to come to this property. There could be some manufacturing companies that might want to be on this site. And, you know, we have a number of different types of manufacturing companies, even by the light industrial by my, my neighborhood and the Fiesta Tech. There's even the opportunities for vocational schools that could come there. That's related to trade and so forth. And so, there's a lot of positive uses. I know that there was even an, there was one comment that medical marijuana would go on this particular site. And I just wanted to share with you, based upon our current land development code, marijuana cannot go on that site. So, I just want to make that clear. But there's a lot of positive businesses that potentially could go on this property that I don't believe that we have even had the opportunity to explore and so forth. So, Mayor, I'm in favor of keeping on to this property only because of these potential positive businesses that could come. And again, these are employment opportunities for our residents to have employment jobs in the future. Maybe not necessarily in the near future, but when I think about my children and my children's children, if we save these properties for the future, then I think we're in a good place.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
I'll be brief, Mayor. I've had the chance to speak with many people on this. Mr. Jones, Mr. Pugh, town staff. And I appreciate everyone's time with me on this project. Over the last number of months, I've had the chance to campaign for reelection. And with that, obviously, you get to meet lots and lots and lots of residents and have lots of great conversations and learn from people what they like and don't like about Gilbert. The number one thing that I heard from residents of Gilbert was protect employment areas. With the limited space that we have left in the town, don't give up employment areas. And so, my commitment to many, many people during the campaign was to do what I could to help protect the employment areas. Does that mean that this will never be rezoned? I, I don't know if that's the case or not, but I am not ready to change 125 acres of potential employment area to residential this time.
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. I feel exactly the same way as Councilmembers Cook, Ray and Anderson. I think that 120, almost 125 acres for one fell swoop to change to all residential is a huge leap to make. And is light industrial the appropriate use? Is business park the appropriate use? I don't know. Is it a mix of something else with residential? I don't know. I just think that there is, there could be more work done on this. And I think that there's so much going on to the east of this property that we're just looking at maybe switching this over a little too soon. So, I, I appreciate the time that I've been able to spend with the developer and Mr. Pugh. And I will be opposed to this project also.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and to the rest of my council members for weighing in on this. I know a lot of time and energy has been spent on this issue. I just will make my comments brief as well. I actually live fairly close to this site, drive this route fairly regularly with kids going to school in the area. And I, I've counted 17 schools on the Recker Road corridor. And I've counted 17 schools on the Wrecker Road corridor, really between Power and Higley, and then all the way down Wrecker Road. A tremendous amount of activity that's happening between the hours of 7:00 and 8:30, and then again, 2:30 to 4:00. I've seen a lot of changes in this area, and I have never actually viewed this parcel as being commercial or being light industrial. And there's a couple of different reasons for that, one of which is it's a very large site with not a lot of visibility. What we're finding from a lot of our businesses is we have discussions, is visibility is incredibly important to a lot of our businesses in order for them to be successful. That's why we have an A-frame ordinance that allows people to put A-frames out on arterial roadways, so they can make sure that with our setback requirements, which are beautiful, we have beautiful landscaping in the town of Gilbert, we're proud of the way that our community looks and feels because of that, but it also creates something that makes it difficult for businesses to be seen from our roadways. And when you have something, a parcel this deep, you end up without visibility to especially those businesses that are in the corner, and I think that does affect the long-term viability. I sit on the airport board, so I won't take too much offense that you said we were sensitive, but I would agree that with the quantity of property around this area, including Power Road, some of which the property has been, for a very long time, zoned light industrial with closer access to the airport, with already built-out infrastructure, roadways and others, they have not been able to develop their property yet to be light industrial. Again, if this property was fronting Power Road, I would feel very differently about my position on this. But long before the Chamber, long before even economic development weighed in on this issue, long before staff actually weighed on this issue with me, I'm sure they had already formed some opinions, but when I did see and was approached with this project, I did not take issue with it. And given the added information that we've been given, I actually feel the same way. So, I am actually in support of this. It's not too hard to count votes, and so you'll know that this does not appear to be passing this evening, but I do feel strongly that this added corridor of residential would complement the community much more than light industrial or business park now and frankly, long into the future. We have 360 acres to the east of this property, and already on our agenda, some additional property that was at Power and Warner Road that's getting rezoned. So, lots of changes happening. Councilmember Taylor, you did steal my thunder a little bit as it related to home-based businesses and also Internet sales tax. It'll be interesting to see what the legislature does over the next session, because I do believe that with the wafer changes and the decision by the Supreme Court, that we will see changes to our tax code as it relates to digital goods and services, and also as it relates to retail, online retail. And I do think that's going to change our models quite a bit as it relates to economic development. So I'm anxious to see, we have no crystal ball, so I don't know what that looks like yet, but I do sit on the Governor's Municipal Tax Commission, and so we do have a meeting, actually, this Friday, next Friday, that will allow us to discuss this a little bit further and help make some recommendations to the legislature as they proceed with a potential bill. So, with all of that being said, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 25, an entertaining motion.
Mayor? I move to approve Item 25 as presented.
Second.
Please vote. That motion fails with a 3-4 vote, 4-3 vote. Thank you. All right. That moves us to Agenda Item 27A. Thank you again for all of you attending tonight. We'll look to our town staff to present. Ashley, please proceed.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Daniels, and Councilmember. Enclave at Madera Park is KZ 1821. This property is located on the east side of Cooper Road, behind the First United Methodist Church, just south of Madera Park Drive. You can see Smoke Tree Drive located here as well. The property is surrounded by residential development, with the exception of to the west with that existing church that I mentioned. The property is 10.93 acres. It is part of the Madera Park and Candlewood planned area developments. So as we go through, I'll talk a little bit more about that. The applicant is proposing a total of 52 lots on this site. The existing general plan designation on-site is 3.5 to 5 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density of the subject site falls within that at about 4.9 dwelling units per acre. The applicant today is requesting a zone change from single-family 7 with a PAD to single-family detached with a PAD. As I mentioned, this is part of the Madera Park and Candlewood PAD, so we would be removing portions of the site from those two PADs and then creating a brand-new Enclave at Madera Park PAD. They are looking for the PAD in order to adopt a development plan that lays out the site, shows where ingress and egress is located. They are proposing to increase minimum lot sizes, decrease maximum building heights, increase side setbacks, and then establish minimum lot dimensions, in an effort to make this fit into the existing community, through the feedback that they received. This project has received a considerable amount of public input. The applicant's done a considerable amount of outreach through their neighborhood meetings, and so a lot of what you see in the development plan is the applicant's attempt to work through some of those issues, and I know the applicant will certainly go through that in greater detail. As I mentioned, the northern portion of the site is part of the Madera Park PAD. You can see that line that runs through the center, so that portion would be removed from Madera Park, and then the southern portion would be removed from the Candlewood PAD to create this new planned area development. When those two existing PADs, Candlewood and Madera Park, went through, this area was planned as open space retention, and the northern portion was planned for a school site. We know that those uses didn't materialize, and ultimately, the land was transferred through hands a number of times, but ultimately is under the ownership of the church to date. The applicant has proposed, again, a 52-lot development with access only through Madera Park Drive. They do have emergency access off of Smoke Tree to the south through the Candlewood development that would not be open to the public, just for fire access as needed. As I mentioned, the applicant has proposed an increase in lot sizes from 3,000 square feet to 3,200. They've established minimum lot dimensions that aren't required as part of the LDC for this zoning district, proposed a reduction in maximum height from 36 feet to 30 feet for those homes, and then they're providing a five-foot setback on both sides, whereas the land development code requires zero-foot setbacks and five-foot setbacks on those sides. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this with a 4-0 vote. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission does have. One thing that I do want to add is, one of the concerns that we've heard throughout the entire process from the residents is that this property has been planned and serves as retention for those two planned communities. And so, we have maintained that the applicant would be required to continue to retain the volumes that the site currently retains, serving those two communities, plus any additional retention necessitated as part of their development. As part of this process, they have provided to staff their preliminary drainage report, which our engineering department did have an opportunity to review and had no significant concerns with. So, I did want to offer that piece of information as part of the record. Aside from that, I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ashley. Any questions from council? Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Ashley. I asked exactly what I wanted to ask, was that engineering report. Do you know if that engineering report has been shared with the neighbors? Because I know at the planning and zoning meeting, a lot of comments from the neighbors was, you know, not knowing what that is. So is that information been able to be shared, you know, with the residents? That town engineering has reviewed it, and it looks really good to them? And maybe you might say it's actually exceeded, you know, the requirements? That'd be my first question.
Mayor and council, we did have an opportunity to provide that. We had a couple of residents that asked for that. Veronica Ross, the HOA president for Candlewood, requested a copy of that, in addition to one other resident. We had an opportunity as well to sit down with Veronica to go over the report. As you might guess, they're quite technical, and so she asked if we would provide some assistance to her to walk through what is set forward in that report, and so we had that opportunity as well.
And their feedback, have you gotten their feedback that they're in agreement that they like what the report indicates, especially from staff?
From our review?
Yes.
Yeah, there were no substantial concerns. Of course, there's always going to be some pickup items. Typically, a drainage report comes in as part of the preliminary plat, which was recently submitted for review but hasn't been yet routed. It was, just came in a couple of days ago. So, it hasn't received its formal review, but as part of this zoning application, we took a preliminary look at it and didn't see anything that gave us red flags.
And so, in reality, this project had probably a couple of different important, I think, compromises from the applicant, from my following the particular case. You know, they didn't want the, kind of the apartment, you know, high-density, multifamily type of environment. The single-family was the preferred. And I know the residents to the south did not want it to be access to their north property, which was the south part of this property. So all of the vehicle, normal traffic is coming from the north off of Madera, I mean, Madera Park Road, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. All right, the applicant? Adam?
Adam Baugh, 4062 East Washington Avenue. And for the record, I don't like cottage cheese either. I do love ice cream, a lot. I'm delighted to be here today. It's been a long process, one that I wasn't involved in originally, but after a very tremendous, difficult neighbor meeting back in January, February, my client had his eyes opened and realized he needed someone else to help navigate through this process. And I think what we've been able to do is find ways to update the plan, understand concerns, get feedback, resolve them. And I can't say that I've been able to make everybody happy. I don't think that was ever a reasonable expectation, though. I think part of it is just to figure out what you can do to best address those things. I want to point out what infill development is. It always has challenges. It's always tough. There's a reason why it's a leftover piece of property. Usually, it's got bad geometry or funny topography or poor access. But the town of Gilbert is always encouraging infill development, because unless somebody steps up, it's always going to be vacant. Unless someone's willing to tackle what is, I think, high-hanging fruit, then it will continue to be a bit of a challenge. And sometimes, infill development's easy, and sometimes, infill development attracts nuisance, a crime or mischief. But smart planning principles encourage developers to either work within the constraints of the code, and where they can't, perhaps look at rezoning or variances or PADs. And this is a great opportunity, and I think that's why town's recommending its support. This is textbook infill development. If you go to Planning Class 101, they'll tell you this is infill development, surrounded by development on all four sides, really weird shape, very odd topography. And that's why I want to tell you, 32 years ago, this site was zoned, 32 years ago, and it still isn't developed, in 1986. And so, it went through a big recession, and so it was conveyed back to a bank, to a school district. The school district realized that they really don't have the need or capacity, and their enrollments were growing elsewhere in the city, in the town of Gilbert. And so, at some point, the school district conveyed it to the church. The church wanted to build a daycare and a parking lot, but probably didn't need that much acreage. And quite honestly, they're not really a land broker or a land banker, for that matter, but from the school's position was, you either buy all of it or you buy none of it. There was no way to just buy partial of it. The church, interestingly, tried to find another opportunity. Because this was originally intended for a school, they actually had some discussions with great hearts who also wanted to put a school here, but found some resistance within the community for that idea. The church realized that, hey, we've got a dirt lot, maybe we can put some turf on here and rent it out for pop Warner or club soccer teams, and maybe create some revenue there. But that idea, while the fields were installed, didn't really materialize into revenue. Until just this year, when my client came forward with a condo development, which I think he thought was a great idea, and town seemed to be receptive of the idea, but the community itself felt like that was not appropriate, mainly because it's apartment zoning, and while he presents condos today, it could be something else down the road. It also requires a general plan amendment. We took a step back, and once I got involved, I said we should do two more neighbor meetings in April, back-to-back nights, to really get an idea of what that feedback is. We took that feedback in April and went and found a home builder to come up with a home building plan. We came back to the community in June for another neighborhood meeting, which was our fourth meeting. And since April to October, we've had probably half a dozen small stakeholder key meetings. The one key takeaway we set from April was identify a key neighbor leader from each of your communities that we can work with. This was the condo plan back then, 64 units, access to the north and to the south, general plan amendment, and multifamily zoning. There's a number of reasons that we heard from the community. I won't belabor you off all of them, although the primary point I heard at the end was to consider building single-family homes, which is what we did. We came back and made the pre-app plan for 60 lots. We heard that still, though, that wasn't consistent with the general plan, so we came back with a modified plan for 55 lots. And the key things we started to do was to take every one of those concerns and address them. Having four neighborhood meetings and about a half dozen individual meetings has really given us a chance to hear that feedback. And so what we've done with this plan, now here we are, in November 2018, the plan approved by council, shows a couple of things. You'll notice that no lot on our property backs up to any existing single residence that surrounds it. We purposely put in a landscape tract on all four sides. What that does is that preserves privacy for any existing resident in that area. Number two, we have no more access to the south. The only access provided to the south is through an emergency gate for public safety purposes. That is not used for residence whatsoever, and it will be locked. Number three, we've made sure that our park area is turfed, so as these residents have been used to seeing and using over the years, can continue to use that. Number four, there is a walkway that connects the street to the south, which is Candlewood, and it wraps around our project, up the east side, and back across, so we maintain connectivity, cross-connectivity from La Westancia, Madera Park, and even Candlewood to the south. While this is a private, open space for these residents funded and maintained by HOAs and monthly dues, we do believe that creating good and strong neighborhoods requires cross-connectivity, kids playing from one neighborhood to the other. We hope that this pedestrian path encourages that type of opportunity. We've also made sure that we've reduced our density, so now we are consistent with the general plan at 52 lots. Most important, at the end of the day, we've made sure that the access goes to north, which is a collector's street, a street designed to collect and convey traffic towards the arterial streets, whereas the street to the south is Smoke Tree, that's a local residential street, probably not as appropriate for traffic to feed in that direction. Here's some product that we had showed the neighbors in the meeting, but it's not just a matter of me putting together a pretty picture, you can actually go tour this property. This very visual rendering is actually a model home at Power and Guadalupe, this one as well. And so we've told residents, you don't just have to go see, believe us, you can go see it and you can walk it yourself. The idea with this type of product is that trying to find a home, brand-new, in the town of Gilbert, under 300 grand, is a virtual impossibility. You have a home builder who's willing to build single-family homes, not apartments, not condos, not townhomes, not attached walls, with rear yards and side yards. Granted, they are smaller than a traditional home, for example, the one that I may live in, but at some point, when you're trying to find an affordable and sustainable community, you've got to start at a price point that is reachable, but more importantly, that's consistent with the values that surround it. And so as part of this process, we've had a chance to look at the comparative market analysis for Madera Park and Candlewood, homes that were built in the late 1880s, early 1990s, and found that our price points are entirely consistent with sales comps in those areas. So at the end of the day, let me just run through those comments and what we've done. We no longer are building apartments, but we're building single-family homes. Our density is consistent with the general plan. We've eliminated any access to the south, and more importantly, we've found a way to not only provide drainage for our own property, but it also sufficient to satisfy for the church, for Madera Park to the north, for Candlewood to the south. And it's a little early to present and submit a drainage report in what is a conceptual zoning case at this time, but we realized, given the concerns we heard from neighbors, the only way to sufficiently prove that we can make this work was to submit that report early. At the end of the day, this creates substantially less traffic than you would have if this were the school site that was originally intended. We've even done a traffic impact analysis, we've brought that to the town. It creates very, very low trips. With me today is our traffic engineer, as well as our drainage engineer, if you have any specific questions for him. One thing worth noting, I've learned from this case that I haven't learned previously, the town of Gilbert has a lot of guest parking requirements. You've got to park one guest spot for every resident on this property, assuming it's on the same day as trash collection and recycle collection, and you've got to demonstrate that and lay that out in the plan. That was a big concern for the neighbors, because they were afraid that we would be parking into their neighborhood with our guest visits. At the end of the day, I think we've come up with a great proposal. It's one that staff can support, it's one that your Planning Commission supports, and it's one that's consistent with the general plan. And when I think about what infill development means and what it takes to get developed, there's a means, and what it takes to get developed, there's a reason why this property's been vacant for 32 years. I don't think anyone's been willing to tackle the problems that it takes to make this work. And we have a developer, we have a home builder that stepped up and found a way to engineer it, to be creative, to be responsive to concerns. And I can't say I've satisfied many people, or perhaps nobody. I don't know. All I know is that we've heard concerns, we've done our best to address them. And I think, given the dozen meetings that we've had so far, and the number of changes we've made, I do believe it's appropriate for this area. With that being said, you've had a long agenda, and I take any comments or questions that you may have.
Thank you, Adam. Councilmember, question?
Adam, question for you on the drainage. That's been a big issue, as I've talked with neighbors. What are your thoughts, and what is a developer going to do to ensure that the drainage is taken care of, whether first, or right at the very beginning, so that they don't have a huge rainstorm, the drainage is half-built, the homes are half-built? How do you, as a developer, make sure you have it taken care of from the very beginning?
That's a prudent question, particularly that I feel like we've had a really long cycle, and there's possibility that things may change down the road. And so, you've got to protect against zombie subdivisions in the future. In this case, you always do your grading first. You grade out the site, and the second thing you do is you put your drainage in. And that's before you go vertical with your structures. And so, those would be the performance requirements before you would even be able to start going vertical with those kind of things. As part of that drainage requirement, we would have to satisfy both our onsite and the two offsites that feed into it. So I think that's probably steps one and two of a 100-step process. That's the first priority.
So the drainage will be completely finished prior to vertical homes being built? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, Adam, thank you. It's my understanding we have nine individuals who wish to speak on this, and so we'll give two minutes to each of you. So please pay attention to those lights that are on the podium. And we'll look to Vice Mayor to assess them. Thank you. I'll start with Mike Vanek, if you'd like to come to the podium and give us your name and town of residence.
We actually don't donate time in the town. We actually prefer that people voice their own opinions. You're welcome to give two-minute presentation, because we have nine individuals who wish to speak. So that's 18 total minutes that people will be presenting. Sure.
Sure, that's fine. Alan Kranzberg, if you'd come down and give us your name and city or town of residence, please. And next up will be Sarah Vanek, or?
Mayor Daniels, council. My name is Alan Kranzberg, and I've lived in Gilbert since 1993. I've lived in Lago Estancia, east of the development, the planned development. And I'm currently president of our HOA board in Lago Estancia. There's some definite pluses to the enclave. They did hold community meetings and did take input. They did look at the traffic plan and water retention, looked at open space. The surrounding communities are not gated, they aren't going to be gated. They are going to own their own streets, so it'll allow them to have parking rules. My HOA has public streets, and so we go by town code. But on the minus side, it's small lots compared with homes on larger lots. You have a developer that's coming in with a 52-home HOA. And not only are 52 homes responsible for their streets, they're also responsible for the water retention for the 52 homes, for the church, for Candlewood, 136 homes, and for some portion of the homes in Madera Park. And there's over 500 homes there. I'm not sure what number of homes. Unlike yourselves, I don't have a town staff, but as an HOA president, I do have some staff. I have a professional community management company, and a professional community manager, who is certified as an Arizona Association manager. So I asked them about the planned development and about a 52-home HOA with some significant responsibilities, and there were some concerns. So I have Jean Marie Bellington, president of Tri-City Property Management, and my own community manager, questioned the viability, long-term viability of this planned community. So I would caution the council to take into account that you're going to be approving 52 homes, being responsible for some pretty broad responsibilities. I don't know of another area where it exists like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Can I have Sarah Vanek, please? Come to the podium, give us your name and city or town of residence. And the next one will be Chad Janz, I think it is?
See if we can get it down.
Do they allow it?
Perfect, thank you. Appreciate it.
You just want the video?
Yeah, just the video.
Open the folder to view files. Sorry.
Sorry.
That works too.
Let's try it again.
We'll just click on, oh, you can open this rezoning hearing and just leave it. And then, can you open the video? This is going to be for me, so we don't have to do this again.
Appreciate it.
Recommended settings is fine. Just your name.
I'm Sarah Vanek. It's 724 West Smoke Tree Road. Public speaking's not really my thing, Thank you.
A quick reminder, we don't clap in council chambers either way. It was a well-done video, though. Thank you. Chad Janz, if I could have you next, and then Veronica Ross, please. Name and just city or town of residence.
Counsel, my name is Chad Janz. I'm a Gilbert resident. I live in Candlewood. And I'm actually the street, or on the street, Smoke Tree, directly across from this development. My concerns are more macroeconomic-based. I think we must learn from our past as a regulatory body, and for the sake of continuity. I implore you to ensure that if you grant this project to start, you ensure that it's finished. I know of several communities and use cases that broke ground in the adjacent city of Mesa before the 2008 downturn, and sat vacant and undeveloped for four-plus years. The housing market and indices are pointing towards another market contraction. Unfinished projects are not in the best interest of existing Gilbert residents, especially those in adjacent developments that could end up with an eyesore directly outside their front door. Please protect us, not the developer in this case. Secondly, I also implore you, implore you in this body to consider future affordable housing developments, as this proposed project should not be considered affordable because not fit within the category, affordable category, and is much different than the adjacent communities and zoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica Ross, please. And then next we'll have Robert Peckham. Name and city or town of residence.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels, council members. Happy St. Nick's. My name's Veronica Ross. I'm a Gilbert resident. I live in the Candlewood neighborhood, and I'm also the president of the Candlewood Homeowners Association. I'd like to share some of the concerns my neighborhood has regarding the development of the enclave at Madera Park. There are three major topics I'd like to briefly touch on regarding this project. And I'm talking fast, because this is longer than two minutes. One, the density. The project began as an apartment complex, and now we're looking at single-family homes. The developer's team has made some positive improvements, but SFD is a far cry from SF7, which is the current zoning for the site. We do have some homes near the site that are SF6, some as small as 5,000 square feet. But to place SFD3000s embedded into an existing neighborhood is quite a drastic change. Keep in mind that this development will be embedded and surrounded by three existing and established neighborhoods. I myself moved into my home in Candlewood in 1990. The second point I'd like to make is street access and traffic. And much of our concern around traffic and parking has been addressed by the developer's team by adding a locked-knock-box-style emergency access-only gate on Smoke Tree Road, and by keeping the fence line on the southern and eastern sides of the site, as it is now, the same. Skipping, skipping, skipping. The traffic problems for people having to exit onto Cooper Road has been tough for a long time, especially during rush hours. It would be helpful for everyone if a light were installed at Madera Park Drive and Cooper. A light has been needed at this location for a long time anyways. The third issue is retention and drainage. I get that the engineering works on paper, but we still have some mini-concerns regarding the ability of a 52-home HOA to maintain a retention basin this size. This small HOA will be responsible for storm runoff and drainage for 60-plus homes in Madera Park, part of the Methodist Church, all of Candlewood, and in extreme weather events, which we're having more and more frequently nowadays, part of the Lago Estancia's green belt will drain into the location. I get that if the tanks and the dry wells are installed properly, that the system will work. The math appears to be correct. And I get that if the enclave's HOA is diligent in maintaining and servicing the tanks and the wells, that the system will adequately meet the drainage and storm runoff requirements. But here's where my 25 years of experience as the HOA president kicks in. What if, while under construction, we hit another 100-year storm? What if another recession hits the markets, and the homes sit empty and unfinished? What if the developer goes under before the project's finished? What if the HOA doesn't do regular maintenance and repairs on the tanks and the wells? What if the HOA goes bankrupt? I've been told that it's not PNC's job to look at the viability of HOAs that are being created, and it's not the council's responsibility
Veronica, I'm so sorry.
...to consider the long-term viability
Just going to ask you to wrap that up. I apologize.
But you must look at the long-term viability of the HOAs that are being created in these small infill projects, because they will be responsible for the flooding, or not flooding, of all of their neighbors.
Thank you. Next, I have Robert Peckham, and after that, we'll have Anthony Ippolito.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for the opportunity to share. I appreciate Sarah Vanek putting pictures together and showing us. A picture paints a thousand words. Those of us who live nearby and have seen that big retention basin full cannot picture that this will work. As the last speaker said, perhaps the numbers on paper work, but, you know, those of us who live anywhere near think that cutting in half a retention basin that all of us have seen full, and which has standing water, as was said, is foolish at best, crazy perhaps. It does not make sense. The developer, the lawyers, will not live nearby. We will, and we will bear the burden of this. Please don't eliminate a flood control system that works for one that is untested. I believe it would be a long-term mistake. And as a taxpayer, a resident of Gilbert, for 12 years, I am concerned that the town could actually face lawsuits by nearby neighbors who have warned of the danger. Those who live on Smoke Tree are saying, there will be a flood, and we're pleading with you. I don't live on Smoke Tree. I live in Madera Park, significantly away from this. But my concern is generally for these neighborhoods, that this is a big mistake. Please don't allow it. Because your planning commission really did not give this very much thought. The approval process was very flawed. Rather than seven people, there were seven seats at the planning commission a month ago. I believe, Mr. Cook, you were there. There were only four in attendance. One didn't even bother to come. One didn't even bother to stay for this agenda item. The chairman had to recuse himself because he was the architect, the previous architect of our previous plan, by this developer. So we were left with barely a quorum of people at the end of a long day, who really did not understand what they were hearing. They got distracted by talking about this history of the school, and they were saying, gosh, this is a better plan than a school is, traffic-wise. Well, perhaps, but that wasn't the issue before us. The issue was to change the zoning from the SD7 down to SFD, excuse me, to have a much smaller footprint. And that is still the issue. It'll increase traffic tremendously. The traffic on Cooper is already terrible. It's getting worse. The approval of the Weinberger Transfer Station means that now there are heavy trucks going up and down Cooper that weren't there a year ago. Cooper and Elliott will be nearly closed very soon for widening, just as Cooper and Guadalupe was. The traffic will be untenable for those of us who live nearby. I do want to point out, at the planning commission in today, not a single resident has said, boy, this is a good idea. None. You will not hear a resident who thinks this is a good idea. So I plead, actually, the golden rule. You would not want to live near this development. Please don't make us do so.
Thank you. I'll have Anthony Ippolito, and then next would be Robert Lamp, please. We can't hear you, sir. I'm sorry. The long walk to the podium, too. Sorry.
I was asking to speak under Amendment 28A.
Oh, you're on 28A. Thank you. Sorry. Oh, that one is too. Robert Lamp is 28A, too. Debbie Fisher?
Hi. I'm Debbie Fisher, and I live at 725 West Smoke Tree Road. I hope that's not too loud, in Gilbert. I've lived there for the last 20 years. I moved from Chicago, where actually, I hate to say, people build things correctly. We have union laborers in Chicago, and they don't just, like, throw up a slab on some land that used to be farmland, which also, you know, then you have these people come in, and they get paid slave labor wages, or less than minimum wage. And those poor people are just trying to make a living from themselves. But you know what happens? After living in my home for 20 years, which was the home that I bought when I moved here 20 years ago from Chicago, there are cracks in the property. I'd also like to talk about the retention pond, because that retention pond was there when I purchased the home in July of 1998. In the 20 years that I have lived there, that retention pond is larger than the size of a football field. And I have seen that four-foot retention pond filled to the top twice. That's in 20 years. Now, let me be your sanity barometer for this evening. Please, okay? As a resident, I know what happens. I don't, I'm not a developer, but you know what? If I was a developer, I would not even think of trying to build a housing development on that property. And I think that that's actually why no one has ever built housing on that land. That land has been vacant for the whole time that I have lived there, and that's the reason why, is because it would be a huge mistake to build houses on there. I spoke to my insurance agent today, and I asked him what would happen. And he told me that actually, the developer was supposed to hand out paperwork regarding the me that actually the developer was supposed to hand out paperwork regarding the soil testing, which, of course, you can't do right now because it's not filled in. So there's four feet that need to be filled in, and then the soil testing needs to be done? Now, I know, Mayor Daniels, you answered my email regarding that testing, and I know the attorney here has said that, and Ashley also said, that those plans, those reports were given to us, they were not given to us, and those were not presented to the community. I truly oppose. This is a mistake to build residential on this property. Thank you.
Mike Vanick, please.
I'm going to fly through this presentation, so I hope everyone can soak it in, like a retention basin. So these are actual pictures, entrances and of the north and south. Major concern I have with the project is their calculations on dwelling units per acre. They say it fits with the general plan, depending on what acre they use in several different reports. For example, 9.85 acres is the number used in the flood retention and drainage report, so that's based off of that. So if you take 52 homes divided by those acres, you have 5.3, which is above the 3.5. So I think we're a little premature to be talking about rezoning something when we don't even have the numbers correct. I'd also urge the council to be realistic about this project and this property, and basically carve out one to two acres that's always going to be retention basin. Whether it stayed the same, whether someone else built anything on it, it's always going to have a pretty high retention standard. So I took the liberty of doing those calculations where there's only eight acres of buildable land, and the density of actual dwelling units per acre is 6.5, well above. Flooding has become an issue. This is a real photo. It's not Florida. We also, you know, regarding the flooding, I've seen the report. I've looked at every number on the report, and I have a few conclusions. So first, the developer, development engineer, Tom Condit, stated in July that the town of Gilbert would require the same volume of retention as originally designated, plus additional retention necessary caused by the new development. More hard services, probably needs more retention. So in the current report, it predicts the project will in fact lower volume of basin two by 49%. Some of that might be soaked up with underground storage and additional dry wells, but they're shrinking the actual land volume and retention volume of basin two. I didn't get very far at all. Final thing on the flooding is 3,000, they meet the minimum requirement by 3,259 gallons over the requirement. It's barely, my hot tub, for example, is 3,000 gallons, so they barely hit it. It don't leave much room for air, and the actual total volume in the flood report, they lower from 461,000 cubic feet to 441,000 cubic feet. Last point is I did some math on the actual development, on a total sellout at the prices that they propose, and I also put in a lot of input costs, land acquisition costs, hard costs, soft costs, carry costs, and the sellout price is just about the same as the total input cost in my calculations. So it led me to ask the question, why would this developer take on the risk of building properties for 12 months, risking another 12 months of sellout, having to raise money, return investment to its investors? And I came to the conclusion that there's a strong likelihood that these 52 homes are billed to rent, and it'll be a bulk sale. So even though they say they got off the rental piece, we truly, of condos and apartments, we do believe all 52 homes will be built, they'll get certificates of occupancy, and they'll sell all 52 to an investor and use the rental income to get the return, which we do not want in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. I believe that completes the communications. That brings it back to the council for deliberation. I'll start on my right this time. Councilmember Cook?
If we can have staff come back up on, I want to review the number of gallons in the worst-case scenario as we saw the retention basin filled up. So we saw some pictures of that retention basin filled with water on the 2014 rainstorm. How many gallons of water is that?
Mayor Daniels, council member, that is a question that I am not prepared to answer. I might be able to dig into the report if you give me a few minutes. I've got it.
Tom, you know, because obviously, the question is, did all those gallons, let's say, you know, let's say it's 3,000 gallons, as I think I may have saw, based upon the applicant's design of these tanks, are all 3,000 gallons going to go into those tanks? And, I mean, maybe there's a little bit above it, but can you provide some clarification?
Yes, Mayor and council, what I can tell you is that in looking at the report, they have provided a storage capacity underground to make up for every bit of storage capacity they're taking out when they're filling in part of the basin, and they've added some additional. I don't know that volume. I think the engineer, David, I think he might be able to answer that with a little more clarity than I can, but I do know that they have provided the required storage to match the existing, both for the existing conditions as well as the build-out and when this, if this development gets built.
So in theory, there could be a pond of water, but it won't be as large as those pictures, because a lot of it would be stored underground, correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. That's the question I have. Mayor and council, I know that originally, when the project was brought to the neighborhood, and Veronica has actually been kind of my point of contact for many, many months, and I know that we've had many, many discussions about this particular project, and I know the apartment complex was a definite no-no. I was clearly not a supporter of that particular project. When the project came as single-family homes, and I know that the applicant with working with Adam, there has been a number of compromises to the project from reducing the number of lots to 52, but also providing a lot of barrier space so that the adjacent homeowners are not, they don't have any of the newer lots connected to them. There's this buffer. And then I know that for Veronica's neighborhood, not having access to their neighborhood, but now the access is to the north, there seems to be a lot of, I think, you know, positive compromises, you know, to support a lot of the neighbors' issues. I can't answer the viability of the HOA. I don't know how you even address that, and their responsibility to maintaining that, the flooding and the potential flooding of even into the neighborhoods. I got to believe that it's been engineered to support the water that might happen in those worst-case scenarios. So, you know, for me, I'm feeling that we're close. It may not be perfect, but I feel like there's some viability to this particular plan as the way it is. I'd love to hear some more interaction with the council with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Ray?
I've been a part of three neighborhood meetings, and two or three times at Veronica's house. It was ironic today that as we talked about flooding, as I stood at the property, she was holding an umbrella for both of us as it rained on us as we sat out there and talked. I do appreciate her efforts, along with the other HOA presidents and neighborhood neighbors who have helped the developer come a long way in this process. And I'm grateful for the developer and their willingness to give up on a few of the things that they had hoped for originally. I agree with Councilmember Cook. I'm not sure this is the perfect option there, but I think it's a pretty good option, especially from where it came from, and so I appreciate the outreach. The fact that there's this many people here tonight versus the neighborhood meetings, where there are a lot more people, and it was much, 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 much louder, I do believe that there's a number of neighbors who are at least happier with this. They might not be 100% content with it, but much happier than when it started. So I am going to vote in favor of this and appreciate, again, the neighbors helping the developer come as far as they did.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just go right down the line here. I know that it's been mentioned that the property wasn't developed all these years for a reason. Well, the property wasn't developed all these years for a reason, because the church owned it and had the idea that it was going to be a church, and so they didn't attempt to develop it into anything else. And now, at this point, they would like to sell the land in order to have it be developed, and with private property rights, they have that right to do. I wanted to address the comments about the planning commission, since I was there and I am their liaison, and yes, there were only four of them that evening, because, yes, the chairman did recuse himself because he was the original architect on the project when it first started, and he didn't want it to look like there was any improprietary situation with him sitting on the dais, so he recused himself. One of our gentlemen called in from out of the country, and we couldn't hear him, so he decided to hang up from the call. One of the gentlemen needed to leave by 8:00 that evening, and we were just about to start this project, so I advised him to leave before we started, because it wouldn't look good for him to start the discussion and then leave the room and not vote on it. And our alternate got stuck at work that evening. So, yes, we were down to four planning commissioners. They are volunteers. They serve on their own time, and they had heard this case at least once before, if not twice, before that evening. So I think that they had had a lot of discussion on this case already, and like what has been said, it may not be the absolute perfect plan, and would we be able to tweak it a little bit better? I don't know, but I think it's a pretty darn good plan from where we started, and considering how long we've been receiving emails for this property, which is, wow, long before, I think it was in pre-app, which is really unusual for us to start receiving emails at that point in time. I will be supporting this project to move forward this evening.
Mayor, clearly, a lot of effort's been put into this to try and make it as acceptable to the neighbors as possible. I understand there's still concerns. You know, regarding the comment about it works on paper, I don't know how else they want it to work. We have to make a decision, and you have to base it on facts and studies and math, and we have engineers for that. And I don't know if there's been an engineering report that has been more scrutinized than the one we're talking about. I look at it as a very positive thing, that even the neighbors agree that it works on paper. That's really the only thing we can ever do. Before you build a project, you have to make sure it works on paper, and that's been done. And this neighborhood's going to be held to the same engineering standard as every other neighborhood. So if we have concerns about flooding, those same concerns would apply to every other neighborhood and all of Gilbert, because they're all held to that same standard. And I've seen the pictures, and I was here. We had some unusual events. These are 100-year events and things like that. Nobody was in great shape after that. Doesn't matter what your design was. And so those things do happen, and, but again, this has been done. This has been studied, and there's going to be as much protection afforded to the neighbors here as any other neighborhood anywhere else in Gilbert. And I see that as a positive. Same goes with the traffic engineering. This is actually a lot lower impact than a lot of other uses would be. Certainly, any in commercial use or industrial use would be much more intense. So I'm very hopeful, and I say this respectfully, I hope the neighbors don't see it as callous, but I really believe that after this is all developed and in, they're going to find out that they enjoy their neighbors, and it will be an amicable situation. So, Mayor, I appreciate the time. I do support the rezon.
I too would like to thank the neighbors for being involved in this. It's, over my past career life, I've very seldom seen a plan change so much over time with neighborhood involvement, so I commend them for being involved. I just want to say that this is a case study of what we're going to face in the future in Gilbert. It's an infill parcel. As Gilbert continues to develop, we're going to face these kinds of parcels, because there's nowhere else to develop on the periphery of the town. And this is what's going to happen, is that people are going to be used to a parcel like this being open space for 20 years and think it's going to stay open space. That's not the case. Someone has purchased the property, the church has sold the property, and now they're looking for the best use of that property, and they've gone all the way from multifamily and whatever else was thought of there to a single-family development. And I just would emphasize again that as we continue to plan in the future, this is what it's going to be like for us, wrestling with infill parcels like this, and I do support the plan as presented tonight.
Mayor, thank you. So as I've mentioned before, property rights are huge. There's a very high threshold for me to tell someone they can't do what they want with their property. This particular case, I do want to compliment both groups that were in discussions of this. I think we've seen other, their discussions, you know, become very contentious, and, you know, somebody's going to get a favorable vote, somebody's not going to be, but both groups here, all the HOAs, have just been really good, and they've been civil in their dialogue. I think the developer, the applicant, has been solicitous more than we've seen in norm, and appreciate them being genuinely open to the feedback and making adjustments. At the end of the day, the church needs to do something with this. They've been doing, they've been looking for a while with various applications. This does seem to check a lot of the boxes for me, Mayor, so just in short, I'm supportive of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I don't have too much to add, just a question, actually, some direction for staff and just some clarification. Years ago, I think when I was first on council, I've been on the council for nine years now, there was a conversation with the church, asking the town if we would be interested in turning this into a park, and at the time, we just didn't have the capacity. It was obviously the downturn of the economy as well, but also, the location of this is really not conducive. The traffic, when you have a park in that close proximity to neighborhoods, that would be on-street parking for the neighborhoods for the extent of the weekend, as you entertain children's sporting events and other things of that nature. So it was something that we discussed years ago, and then we heard nothing for a long time. I will compliment the developers as well and the neighbors. Without the neighborhood input, this would not be a better project, and I am really grateful for the input that has been made thus far. I would like to ask staff to do an analysis on that Madera Park light that's been requested. I did hear the request from the neighbors. We do have specific engineering standards that would have to exist and traffic counts that would have to exist in order to put in that light. As you can imagine, we get lots of requests all over the town of Gilbert for both lights and for stop signs and things like that, so there is an actual standard that we adhere to, a certain amount of volume, and also looking at the safety of those types of intersections. So I would ask staff if they would take another look at that, particularly modeling in the additional home sites to see if a Madera Park light would be warranted at the appropriate time or worked into our CIP plan. So with that, I just echo the comments of my fellow councilmembers, grateful for their insight as well, and I am also in support of this project this evening. So with that, I will close the public hearing on this agenda item and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to make the findings a fact and adopt the attached ordinance approving Z18-21.
Second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you, and thanks again to everyone that was here. We do have one more public hearing item. I'll open the public hearing on agenda item 28A, a special events permit change. I was the one that requested that this item be on our agenda.
I was the one that requested that this item be on our agenda. And through a lot of work with the town attorney and also through our Parks and Rec Department, have come to the conclusion that the ordinance that's before us is a good idea. We do have some public comment. Based on the emails that I've received, I understand there is some confusion between a special use permit and a special event permit. So let me just clarify that ahead of time because I recognized, it took me actually a couple emails to realize that that's what we were. And it doesn't mean that some of you aren't against a special event change, but a special use permit allows for, and maybe Kyle or Catherine is actually a better person to describe this, or Nancy. You guys can draw the short straw and see who has to come to the podium to help us. But the special use permit is actually very different than a special event permit. So Catherine, will you assist?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A special use permit or a conditional use permit is the way that our code deals with uses that need a little additional attention within our zoning districts. So for example, a car wash or a specific use like congregate living may fit in a zoning district, but it, in order to provide compatibility among uses, there's an additional level of review and public hearing in case conditions of approval need to be added.
Okay, and I'm going to add to that. Because if a residential home was to be made a special event space, they would need a special use permit. So I'll give you a, for example, the Elegant Barn, which I know some of you were involved in. If that, because that, they wanted to take a residential use and change it to a special event use, meaning it's for banquets and parties and weddings and things like that, they were required to go through a process to grant them a special use permit or a conditional use permit.
Yes, that's a great example. The use is banquet facility and it's going into a single-family residential zoning district. So because that commercial use is landing there, there's an additional level of review.
Thank you. So that's different from the special event permit, and I can totally see where the confusion is. It is different from a special event permit, which would be if someone were to hold, let's say, an event on their private property where there were going to be in this ordinance more than 500 people attending at one time. So for example, if you wanted to use your home for a wedding, your daughter's getting married and she wants to get married in your backyard, you actually can do that without a special event permit. However, if you want to rent out your home as a special event space and hold weddings for lots of people and they pay you and they're having parties there, that requires a special use permit and this process does not change that. So I just want to make sure that's really clear. Hopefully I explained that with clarity because I realized after I got several emails that there was confusion as it related to those two things. Councilmember Ray.
So Mayor, what's the difference between using it one time versus renting it out? When does it become, we have to go to that next step? Is it once a week? Is it once a month?
Nancy? We've spent hours on this and we wanted to provide some clarity around that.
Yeah, Mayor and councilmembers, I was hoping I wouldn't have to speak. The main difference, if you look, there's the definition of temporary sales event, where we talk about it, where we would allow it for up to two times on private property. But the main distinction is using your home for like residential type of purposes, like hosting a wedding, a private event, something that's not open to the public, that where your property is not being used for a commercial purpose. It's just being used for you to host your wedding versus a home that's being advertised and used and advertised for lease maybe so that it can be used as an event facility or banquet facility and so forth. So same thing with like VRBOs. A VRBO is protected under the statute if it's being used for housing type of accommodations, like a motel or a hotel type of use. But where it's being used for and advertised to people and saying, "You can use this place for your events. You can rent it, have parties." That's different because it's not being, it's not, the focus isn't housing, accommodations, sleeping, you know, those types of things. So I think that's, hopefully that answers your question, Councilmember Ray.
Any other questions?
Make sure I understand. So when it becomes a commercial opportunity, in other words, you're advertising, someone can pay to use your property for one of these purposes, that's when it crosses the line?
Exactly. And also the, kind of like in the concept of zoning, what's the primary use? If you're primarily using it also, you know, for housing type of accommodations, that's very different than where you have a vacant home and it's being advertised for events. And so that's another kind of factor.
And then just to clarify, I did get an email from a resident asking us to keep the special event permit process in place because code compliance used that as an enforcement tool for the residents. It actually, they did not use the special event permit process. Can you touch on that, please?
That's correct. They did not use the special event process. What they were using was the zoning process because the home was being advertised and used as an event venue. And it still is being advertised, I believe up until yesterday, was still being advertised for a place to host large parties and events.
So again, just to clarify, they were using their home for a special event, but a special event venue.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that, this code, the one that we're discussing tonight, does not actually affect that process. That process is still in place and that enforcement capability is still in place, even if we make this change. Correct, okay. Councilmember Cook.
All right, you're not going away yet. Thank you for staying up here. I have a question related to, there's sometimes residents will get together in small groups, like a Bible study, and then these Bible studies eventually form a community and a church. And it may become popular. Where, I'm just trying to understand those gatherings. Because I know that I've gotten some communication that, are we going to limit?
Under this proposed change, if you, if you look at the new definition of what would require a permit, we've eliminated, first of all, if it's in the home, the only time we would require a permit for those types of activities is if, let's say there's a liquor license that's needed, that the gathering is blocking a street or a sidewalk or there's more than 500 attendees at one time. So it probably, you know, wouldn't apply necessarily to a gathering of people to.
So if a community, let's say a Bible study gets to like 50, they're okay as long as they're not infringing on some of the public right of ways relates to what's indicated in here then?
Absolutely. And then we've also eliminated the requirement for, on private property where a church or a school is leasing or owning some sort of property. We're not going to regulate property that's being leased or owned by schools.
Thank you.
For special events.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Nancy, I don't know why you didn't want to come down to speak because you've done a great job tonight. I know this has been a long discussion and there's a lot of points to cover, but you've done a great job tonight. So thank you. I appreciate that.
That was easy. All right, we'll go to the residents now, the individuals who wish to speak on this item. If you still want to speak, I hope I've clarified something. But you're more than welcome to come speak to us and Vice Mayor will assist.
I will attempt to say this name and I hope I don't really kill it. Ramar Argaron, if you could come to the podium and give us your name and city or town of residence. And next will be Robert Lamp and then Anthony Ippolito.
That was a pretty good job. It's Ramar Ogeron. And I've lived in Gilbert since 1990 and in the Circle G Ranches since 1999. And I'm here with some of my neighbors. Thank you, Mayor, for that clarification because I am, I did right and I did not understand that. I just want to say, I really appreciate Lori DiOrio and Frank Elbaro because they have been working with us. They have been so professional and so responsive, patient. And we have gotten some relief because of the citations. So that process does work and I'm glad to hear that it's going to continue to work. I hope we can see the change, the changed thing online perhaps. So, because it's so late right now, it's probably an hour past my bedtime. So I'd like to look at it when I'm fresh and see what all it says and kind of understand and process it a little bit. But thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's a big relief.
Thank you, Ramar. Robert Lamp, please, if you're still here. Name and city or town of residence, please, and then Anthony Ippolito.
Okay, I'm Robert Lamp. I've lived in Gilbert for the last 10 years and I'm also in the same neighborhood as Ramar. And appreciate, you know, what you explained earlier. Our concern was that, wasn't, is that this would impact our ability to use a tool to enforce issues that we were having. Just looking, I was able just to look over the ordinance a little. I guess I'm a little surprised though that for private property, you guys are still setting the limit at 500 individuals because I think that would generally overwhelm most neighborhoods, even if it was given a permit. Anyway, I guess that's all I had. And we do appreciate all the work that the ordinance enforcement has done in our neighborhood. And thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anthony?
Hi, Anthony Ippolito. And been here for 28 years, Gilbert. I live in Desert Lane, Greenfield Baseline, Southeast corner. It's a community like Circle G Ranches and White Fence Farms. We had a event the other day, about a month ago. It was a boutique and they had like 10 vendors there with cash registers and everything. And there was, were there 500 people there at one time? No. There was probably 50 to 100 cars coming through every hour. So you can imagine there's a few hundred people there. People were parking in our yards, leaving trash. We couldn't get in and out of our driveways. And I think I'm speaking for most of my neighborhood. The problem is when we called the Gilbert PD, they told us that we had to take it up with you, Mayor Daniels. And so I'm here to ask, who enforces this? Because I believe that, you know, they are violating some of your rules because, I mean, you got vendors with cash registers. I mean, you talked about home-based businesses. I don't believe you're allowed to have employees at a home-based business. All that amount of traffic coming in and out. And my concern is that, you know, there's children running around the neighborhood and they could get hit by these cars. And my son just bought a house next door to us and I'm hoping for grandkids pretty soon. Right, Kim?
I've never seen anybody get publicly called out for that. So congratulations. You guys are the first.
It's an ongoing joke.
Good grandfather.
It was really annoying to us and everybody was up in arms. And I'm not going to repeat what my neighbors were saying, so it wouldn't be appropriate here. So I just, you know, I'd like to know who enforces this and takes care of it because it was really a problem for us.
Thank you. I'm going to just read one part of this, which is the liability piece to address what you've just asked. It says, "Compliance with or exemption from this chapter does not relieve any person from the liability arising out of activities and events conducted on the person's private property." So this is a new piece of this code. What you were just describing is what we call a temporary sales event. And that means, and there is a definition here, "A temporary sales event shall mean a temporary sales event that lasts three consecutive days or less." So it can't last more than three days. "And does not require town services or resources." "A temporary sales event on private property, private non-commercial property, does not require a special event permit, provided that no more than two temporary sales events occur at the same property within a calendar year." So that means that there couldn't be more than two temporary sales events, or boutiques as you've described it, on someone's private property more than twice per year. It also does talk about how, and again, it's under the liability piece, it talks about how if someone is holding said event, either a sidewalk sale, a temporary sales event, or something else within their neighborhood, all laws and rules still apply. So that means that if someone is blocking your driveway or a fire hydrant, Gilbert Police can be called. And hopefully they don't say that it's Mayor Daniels' fault. Hopefully instead, they actually cite the individual who has broken the law. And that's the thing I keep going back to is that we have laws on the books. We have noise ordinances that should help us with the noise issue. We have parking requirements and very clear laws as it relates to parking and traffic and safe driving and all those things. And all of those laws still apply. And that's essentially what would be enforced, even if there was a special event permit on the property. They would still, they would still be looking to actual town code in order to enforce those laws. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, you pretty much hit this, but I just want to comment directly on the 500-person limit as an example of something that's, in my mind, this is going to sound crazy at first. I don't think we even need a limit at all. Here's the point. The point is there's already laws that prohibit public nuisances. The 500-person is just sort of a, some kind of a standard we think, at some level we think is inherently going to create some nuisance. But at the end of the day, what we're directly prohibiting is really the standard that's protecting you. So that 500 is just kind of a rule of thumb we're trying to put as an additional measure. But it's the direct prohibitions and laws that are going to protect you. And they have before and they will continue to do so and none of that's changing. So I just wanted to point that out.
And I'll actually touch on the background of the 500 because we actually discussed that at length. What we were looking at is what can our streets safely handle within a short period of time? So I looked actually at our schools as probably the best example. When you have elementary schools that are on either minor or major collector streets and there's, let's say, a thousand kids that attend the elementary school, it's safe to say that you have 500 cars, give or take a few, coming to one spot at the same time. And that traffic generally clears out within 20 to 30 minutes. This isn't something that takes an extensive amount of time, hours, to sort of sort through. You get much above that and then we start to look at special events on private property like the balloon glow at Santan Village, which is a great community-wide event. But they get a lot of people at one time and it can, even on major arterials, cause a major issue. And so we wanted to make sure that there was some mechanism in place that required if someone was having a special event on private property, be it Santan Village, which is private property, or a residence, that there was some threshold where they would be required to come to the town ahead of time to develop a traffic plan or to develop a safety plan. Some of those other pieces that we think are critically important in order for the general public to make sure that everyone's interests are protected. So that was the thought process behind the 500 is what can our streets safely accommodate and keep circulation moving in a relatively short period of time?
And Mayor, I have no conflict with it at all, but I just wanted to point out, even if somebody had 400 people and it didn't reach that threshold and yet they were still blocking streets, they would still be in violation of something that we could enforce. So the point is, yes, I get the rationale and I appreciate it, but it's the direct impacts that were already being prohibited that we'll still be able to control. So I just want to make that.
And generally, we don't let people come back. But you have waited a long time to speak tonight and had to sit through a lot of public comments. So please, share with us your thoughts.
And listening to what you just said, three days for the event, correct? This went on for four. That is in violation, correct?
It will be after this is adopted.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're going to adopt this, I take it?
Well, I haven't, I haven't talked to the rest of my councilmembers yet. So this is my time.
And when they make the violation next time, who enforces it?
That would be, apparently it's the mayor. I'll be driving out there myself.
So we can't? So we can't have it enforced at that point?
Absolutely, you can.
I mean, will the police enforce it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
This would be, code and PD would be enforcing it.
Mayor, thank you. I know that, I have a suggestion here. I know that when we were going through the sign code update, Councilmember Anderson wanted a revisit of the A-frame after a period of time. I would like to suggest that we put some time on here, I don't know if it's 24 months or 36 months. I know if it's 12 months. Maybe we can discuss that, we come back and revisit the success of this. I'd like to add maybe some clause to this, as we did with the A-frame signs.
I think we can do that in just direction with staff, but I would be comfortable with a 12-month approach to this. I think that we'll have a substantial number of events within 12 months that would help us gauge whether we need to tighten up some parameters. We live in this world where we're always trying to figure out the what-if. We cannot govern to the what-if. It makes it very difficult, because we would be here all day, and this document would be about 700 pages. And so I think it's really important that we give the control back to the people, and I'm happy to revisit this in 12 months. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Pretty amazed how many nuances you've looked at this angle. Compliment you for that. Let me, let me just ask you, you probably can answer this. If we have an HOA over 500 doing like an Easter egg roll, so there's a religious aspect to it, what's the, I know you don't want to do what-ifs. Can you just answer that one for me? And then I have another one, a definition question. But what would that scenario look like under the proposed ordinance?
I say we look to Nancy Davidson, who loves coming to the microphone, to help us.
So I just, Mayor Daniels and Councilmember Taylor, I believe your question is if, let's say, there's a HOA-regulated community, and they want to have an Easter egg hunt type of event, is that?
Yeah, over 500, but it has a religious aspect to it, like an Easter egg roll, that's very large.
And would it be like in a common area?
Yes.
Right. So, well, first of all, if the HOA prohibits a specific event, then those rules would govern, and the HOA would enforce it. But if they're on private property, more than 500, under this code, that it would be considered an event that's subject to a permit requirement, unless it's being organized by a religious organization or a school.
Okay, thank you.
Don't leave, Nancy.
I also wanted to just add a comment that it doesn't stop any organizer of any event from working with our Parks and Rec Department. We've said this, and we hope to kind of get the word out too. Many organizers want to work with the Parks and Rec Department, because if their event causes traffic problems, it only puts a negative reputation on their event or their activity. So a lot of them are, would like to work with the Parks and Rec Department, because it only helps and benefits their event. And some of them have already indicated that, even if a permit's not required, can we still work with you? And of course, Parks and Rec's department more than happy to work through that and help work with traffic plans and so forth. So although a permit might not be required, it doesn't mean that they won't go through the process with our Parks Department if they want to. Sorry, just wanted to add it.
Nancy, thank you for that. Mayor, the other thing I wanted to clarify is, number three, where it says owned or leased by a school district. I was trying to look in the actual language to see if the word "school district" were in there. In statute, that really just means Gilbert Public School property, Higley or Chandler. It may exclude charters or privates, so I don't think that's the intent, but perhaps that could be clarified.
Yeah, I don't think that that was, I think, I believe the language is from the current ordinance, so it might have just been what we removed from the, in the proposed draft, where, is where it says "for school purposes." But I don't think we touched the word "district."
I'm happy to strike that. That was not the intent.
Yeah, and that was not the intent, yeah.
For any school. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I have a question. Can I ask a question of Nancy, please? Maybe two? If an event is open to the public, and you need a liquor license, does it need a special event permit?
Yes. So we tried, the open to the public, close to the public distinction was so confusing that we just, what we said is, more than 500 attendees, or if you need a liquor license, which is regulated under the state, so that's governed under state law. Those, or if it blocks a street or a sidewalk. Those are the conditions. Whether it's open to the public, close to the public, we're not going to be, it was just, it was confusing to the public, and also just kind of, it didn't really make sense. If you remember the flow chart. We're trying to get away from this complicated flow chart.
Yeah, the public or open or not didn't end up being the determining factor anyway. So it was sort of, it was moot.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions from council? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy, for all your work on this as well. And I will close the public hearing, whatever agenda item we're on. Lost to my agenda. That went fast. 28A, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, with great compliments to you. Really, this is awesome. You've done a great job. You've dug in, you know it inside and out. You've answered people, you've taken everything into consideration. Well, okay, you've taken, okay, anything I can think of is into consideration.
I did not do the what-ifs.
Okay, we're not omniscient, okay? But you've done a great job. Thank you. So just with that compliment, I move to approve 28A as presented.
And I would second it if we add the direction of 12 months from now.
Yes, and we're striking the word "district."
And striking "school district" and replacing with just "schools." Thank you.
Second?
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. All right. I think that finally does complete our public hearing items, and moves us to Agenda Item 30, administrative item. There is no presentation from staff. We actually heard this at our council retreat. So is there a motion?
I move to accept it as presented, item 30.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Any boards, commissions, and committee reports from the council? Eddie has one. I mean, Councilmember Cook.
Eddie is fine. It's more friendly.
Almost 10, so everybody's going to go back to first names.
I know. I just got notified, there's been a lot of, this is related to AMOa. There's been a lot of efforts as it relates to the DCP, the drought contingency plans and the back and forth. AMOa in support, I was very supportive. We sent a letter to the CAP team, and I just heard earlier that there was a meeting that it looks like the DCP team has agreed to what we call the November 29 decision. So it's not perfect, but it won't necessarily hurt Gilbert tremendously, but it's actually a positive compromise in favor of pretty much all municipalities here in the Phoenix area. So I just share that with you.
Thank you. Any other boards, commissions, or committee reports? Any future meeting items? Town manager.
Thank you, Jen. And Eddie, Jordan, Bridgette, Victor, Scott, and Jared.
I'm slick Vic.
Vic. Couple of staff and departments I'd like to recognize. We wrapped up another very successful Gilbert Days events, and there were too many people involved to recognize each one of them individually. But huge thank you and kudos to Parks and Rec, Police, Fire, Traffic, Digital Government, Emergency Management, NINI, and all other departments that were involved. Also like to give a special recognition to our Public Works Director, Jessica Marlowe, who after, the week after, was excited that we didn't have a water main break as part of this Gilbert Days parade, to which we promptly had one the very next day. So we can all thank her for bringing that forward. I also wanted to thank the members of our Police, Fire, Digital Government, and Emergency Management, as well as the Gilbert Public School District. It was an amazing show of coordination with the threat we had at Highland High School last week that was resolved without incident, but they did an exceptional job of working that incident and keeping parents informed, and keeping the children safe, and working together to get that closed out quickly. I also like to thank our Public Works Department and CIP, as well as Eric Braun and our consultants for the hard work and great work they did on the water resources master plan. And then lastly, recognize the members of Gilbert PD, who participated in No Shave November. They raised $4,075 towards cancer research. It's my understanding there was a plea for a double down December to be a part of that, but that was, that was rejected, and we just encouraged them to continue their charitable giving and activities. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Patrick, any report from council?
I agree with everything Patrick just said. But I will add, as part of incident at Highland High School, I was part, one, as a parent, but also being a part of the debriefing afterwards with everybody. And to hear how Police and Fire, and GPS, and Phoenix, and Mesa, and ASU PD all helped out, it was an amazing, amazing thing that was, that was done. Obviously, we're all very, very grateful that it turned out the way that it did. But to all of those who worked for that and on that, and continue to work as that investigation unfolds, thank you. It was, you represented Gilbert very well. Thank you to each of you.
Mayor, I have one comment. If you haven't seen the manager's update with our town manager, Patrick Baner, please take a moment to find it on social media. You will be happy that you did.
I am not happy that I ever saw that.
Mayor, I would just like to say in my defense that that jacket and shirt were for the Christmas season and to spread some holiday cheer. And the fact that he did not smile and had a deadpan delivery through all of it is my typical on-camera style, and so that shouldn't be held against me.
Is that why you're all dressed in black tonight?
We will discuss it at your review in May. All right. Thank you, everyone. I've already had my mayor's update, so I appreciate your attendance and participation. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.